This is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven zoning board of adjustment. Adequate notice to this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Oprah Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice and schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press on January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four, and the Two River Times on February first, twenty-twenty-four. That notice is also posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. Copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file with the Office of the Borough Board. Copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public as have requested such information in accordance with statute. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is threatened to include this statement in the minutes twenty. Before proceeding with the formal meeting tonight, I'd like to say a few words to the applicants, their experts in the audience about the role and authority of the Fairhaven Zoning Board of Adjustment. The board is a separate and independent municipal legal entity and its limited authority is specifically set forth in borough ordinances and the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law. It is quasi-judicial in nature and the members of the board are unpaid volunteers appointed by the mayor and council. The zoning board does not enact the borough land use laws and regulations. The Borough Council does that. The zoning board does not enforce the land use laws of the borough of Fairhaven. This is the responsibility of the Borough Code Enforcement Officer. This board deals with appeals for relief from the requirements of the borough's land use laws or denials by the zoning officer. An applicant is never entitled to a variance, also known as an exception to the zoning regulations, but must meet specific criteria required by the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law and the Fairhaven ordinances by satisfying certain required standards of proof. The board has no authority to waive these requirements. The burden of proof is always upon the applicant to show that he or she is entitled to specifically requested. The applicant must prove that a deviation from the regulations will advance the purposes of the ordinance and that the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment to the zone plan. Variances related to the future use of the land are not intended or authorized to remedy temporary or unique personal situations. Roll call please, Sean.
Mr. Conchetti?
Here.
You don't have to walk here. Ridgeway? Mr. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Forte?
Here.
Dr. Walker?
Here.
Mr. Fincella? Mr. Schuettig? Mr. Layer?
Here. Will you show me a switch to the flag?
I apply to leave and submit to the fire in the United States of America. You see the report where it says one nation under one law.
Okay, we're starting late because we're waiting for a board member and I'm going to do something I've never done before. When the board member walks in, I ask everybody just to wonder these, okay? And so what we're going to do is we're going to start with our administrative items and see if we can clean that up. And as soon as Mr. Fincella shows, we will get started with the Doyle application. Couple of amendments then, minutes from July eleventh, twenty-twenty-four.
Excuse me, you have a microphone? I can't hear what people are saying.
But we have no amplification of voices, but we can try and speak up. And you're more than welcome to.
Speakers here. There used to be microphones.
Yeah, it's now taken by the owl system picks up everything. Yeah, I don't know anything about how the speaker system works. We've never used it. In fact, the microphones that we used to have never projected or amplified voices. They only recorded them.
That's why I'm in front, so maybe I didn't hear what you're saying.
And certainly I'm okay as long as you don't get too close to the applicants. If you can move forward, if that helps you at all, please feel free to do so.
Okay. July eleventh, twenty-four minutes. I have reviewed the minutes. No changes to be made on my end. I will make a motion to approve minutes from July eleventh.
Second. Mr. Conchetti?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Forte?
Rob Steed.
Dr. Walker?
Yep.
And then Mr. Layer?
Yes. Resolution for DIACON thirty-six to Normandy. I believe there was an altered resolution that was submitted? Is that right?
Anyhow.
I did. Having reviewed that, I could make a motion to approve the amended resolution for DIACON.
Second. Mr. Nchatsky?
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelo?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Oh, excuse me.
Dr. Walker?
Yep.
And Mr. Layer?
Yes. Also, resolution for FALL sixteen Church Street. And when you review the resolution, I can make a motion to approve the resolution for FALL.
Second. Mr. Nchatsky?
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelo?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
I would know, so I don't think I'm.
Uh, if you would know on that application, it's not.
And Mr. Forte?
Rob Steed.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
And Mr. Layer?
Yes. The only other two things I have are the stormwater rules. If you want to go over those.
Uh, yeah, Jordan, how long is it going to take to give everybody just a quick summary of the storm? Well, you've got a little longer, but go ahead.
So the state put out new stormwater regulations. They recently did in twenty-twenty-one. Um, that was a big set of changes and now they're doing it again in twenty-twenty-three.
I can't hear you. You're talking to them, but I can't hear you.
All right.
Yes.
The state put out new stormwater standards in twenty-twenty-three. It's the latest standards. They were official, uh, all state in the DEP in July of twenty-twenty-three. Municipities had until twenty-twenty-four, uh, July this month, July this year, to formally adopt it in the ordinance as well. Um, it's a big change, but it's as simple as far as ordinance goes. The, the real change is how precipitation, uh, is looked at. Um, currently it was just current standards, um, or current precipitation. But the concern now is to look to the future, not just, you know, today. So, uh, engineers, applicants, when they're a major development, they need to design both to today's precipitation and to the future, which is two thousand one hundred. Um, that's really only applicable on their projects, so major developments. It's deserving over an acre for, uh, increase in purveyance of a quarter acre. So not many residential applications will see that. Um, you know, some commercial might see that in town. Um, but that's adjusted. It's just a lot, you know, a lot more for the engineers to do to ensure that the basins data sign are just for today, but they withstand the change in weather in the future.
So if the, if the concept was that we need to look further ahead and be prepared for more water, are the remedies and resolutions of how to deal with that water similar to what was?
In all the same, you're just designing for.
Designing for more water, essentially. Got it.
Jordan, is that, is that put in writing?
Sure.
Can we get, can we get a copy of that?
So I think it's official in Fairings ordinance. That's what we heard now.
Well, actually, the reason that I asked Jordan to speak about it was because it was circulated. I thought it was circulated to all of us, but maybe it wasn't. Sheila, if you could just recirculate it?
Yeah, I think I did it for last week.
I think it was, it was circulated when it came out. It was between two meetings. It could have been forty-five days ago at this point.
Good. Thank you. The only, if I could just, the only other minor point is they provided a timetable for applications that are sort of in process, so you don't have to redo everything as to when it's going to kick in. So you have some pipeline and then there's a cutoff to ask when you have to start doing these things.
And that's about it. And I assume, given the rarity of Fairhaven, that we don't have any major applications pending, which is going to be affected by it.
Pending, so at this point, anything submitted where it's applicable to, they would have to follow new standards.
Was there some sort of table that is showing you?
There is, yeah.
Waterfall in a couple of years?
It's basically taking the current levels and there's a multiplication factor. So it's, the current one is, it's based on counting. So it's typically like one point oh two, one point oh three for the current. And then for the future, it's maybe like one point two times with the current precipitation values.
Okay, thank you. Um, that concludes the administrative items. Do we want to try and lean into the Doyle applications?
Making a good start.
Oh, on Doyle, so you're not ready?
I'm ready. For Mr. Fincella. All right.
Oh. Let the record reflect that Mr. Fincella has arrived.
Sorry.
Greetings.
I have this on for next week.
We understand.
And my wife said this morning, do you have a morning? I said, no, it was next week, sorry.
She was right again.
Yeah. Thank God, she's.
All right, we're ready for Doyle. Roski, may I ask you to bring all of your folks up? Show them in and box.
That's what we did.
As well as word. You're going to testify. I think you're going to testify. Might jump in, might clarify. We'll square you in so we don't have to disrupt your presentation.
So.
So I'm just going to testify before the board to be the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Answer that question if you have to.
Yes.
Same directions I usually give before you start speaking. So, when you start speaking, state your name for the record, spelling your last name. We're recording this. We're not amplifying it. Apologize. We're recording this. And that way, if there needs to be a transcript made of this proceeding, we'll at least know who was speaking and we'll be able to tie that up. Mr. Roski, do you have permission to have marks and exhibits? See if they coincide with you. Fair jurisdiction. You'll cover jurisdiction? I'm sorry. I wanted, I wanted to cover. Can we have jurisdiction?
Yes.
Yes, we do. We do have jurisdiction. Thank you. Want to do application A one? Copy of the zoning officer's denial letter. I'm sorry, the application plus the list of variances and basis to grant variances, all A one. Uh, copy of the zoning officer's denial letter. That's going to be A two. Completed land use checklist. These are agents, A three. Um, the tax collector certificate, strike that. Signed, sealed, and architectural plans prepared by Anthony Condors.
Condor, that's correct.
Thank you. Pated while revised to, um, April twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. Seal cover sheet versus second floor plans, elevations, three pages. A five signed, sealed plat by the county group. That's October thirty-first, twenty-three. A six, uh, photocopy, there's photocopies of the exterior of the home and property. Uh, since fourteen pages, I have thirteen. You might want to clarify that. ZB one is going to be the engineering review letter, uh, April four, twenty-twenty-four, with signature of Jordan Rizzo. Um, ZB two is again engineering review by Jordan Rizzo, but that one's May tenth of twenty-twenty-four. Now we also have ZB three, which is a zoning board resolution going back to August of nineteen eighty-seven. Um, do you have any other exhibits that you want to mark at this point?
Yes, we do, Mr. Kovacs. We've got the discussion purchase. It's, um, a, a copy of the plan that had some revised numbers on it based on some back and forth between the authorities and.
You can just mark that as A seven?
And that's dated today.
Updated.
Revision, revision today's date.
I'm sorry, the revision date is when?
Uh, eight one, August first.
Look at that. Just in time.
Yeah, this is A seventy-seven?
A seven. And that's the revision to? Eight five?
Revision to A four.
A four, excuse me. Anything else, sir?
All I have for them, that's all I have is.
Um, are there any waivers that we want to take care of initially?
No, there are no, um, chuckle's waivers required. Everything's been provided. So we're all set there.
Okay. Really? Okay, for yours.
Thank you. Mr. Chair of the board, Rick Roski, on behalf, be cap of the applicants, Gregory and, um, Carney Doyle. The application before we continue, the case of, the case of the property that's located at one oh nine Harrison Ave. Uh, the property is a single family residential home, uh, that we go and purchased in the union of twenty-one. Um, and the sum and substance of the application, uh, speaks various approval for the, uh, construction of, uh, in addition to the rear of the home. Um, the existing house is to remain. The house was built, as best we can tell, in around nineteen eighteen or so. Um, uh, all of the existing improvements at the front of the house, right? As well as the driveway and so forth, everything to the rear of the existing addition is also to remain.
Yes.
Uh, unchanged. Uh, as you'll see, as Mr. Condors walks through the testimony, um, uh, the sort of house, the, the Doyle's and their, their two young children. Um, and in fact, both the Doyle's work, uh, from home, uh, would yield. Um, you, you'll understand the proposed floor plan as, as we go through it. Um, and with respect to the lot, as you can see from the plan, it's, it's, um, you know, it's a significantly oversized lot for the R five zone. Uh, and it's, you know, long and narrow, uh, with, with none of the other lots, uh, you know, along Harrison. And so provide for a bit of a challenge for people like Mr. Condors to try and, uh, comply. And, and, and of course, as one would say, as, as one would assume, um, there are a couple of, uh, it's an existing non-conforming with respect, with respect to the side setbacks, um, which are not being exacerbated as part of this application. Um, and, uh, you know, as you would also expect, uh, as you would also expect for a property that's, you know, over three times the size of the minimum lot size required in the zone. Uh, the property is, is well under on floor area ratio, building coverage, lot coverage, but the, uh, uh, but does exceed the maximum floor area permitted, uh, in the R five zone. So I think that is kind of gives the background on it.
Mr. Roski, is that the only variance required, Mr. Exceed the cap?
That's the only there.
Uh, and a side setback.
There's a combined side.
Combined sides.
Combined side setback for, oh, counting the porch.
Right, yes, yes.
Those are the two. Um, so Tony, we've been sworn in already. If you could walk the board through the property, starting with what exists.
Would you like us to stipulate as Tony's credentials as a licensed architect?
Wonderful.
Anyone have a question about Mr. Condors who's been accepted as a licensed architect many times?
No.
Okay, then tell me, nothing pattern with your license?
That's part of that.
Um, so Tony, let, let, um, now I, you, you, you have an exhibit up there that's been marked as A seven. Right, right. We had to set it for the record. It's, it's, it's a copy, it's an exact copy of what's been submitted to the board, except for changing the numerical calculation based on some discussions on the, uh.
That's right.
That basement.
Correct, yes.
So let's walk the board through the, the property as it exists today. And then we'll go into the proposal and then talk about the, uh, the, uh, very.
Okay, so, um, so as you brought, you mentioned it, it's a very narrow lot, but one, one of the, one of the challenges of the slide is the fact that it's huge. Uh, you can see it's leaning. So that creates some, uh, some setback issues for, uh, especially with the existing. We have an existing side setback on the, uh, the south side of the property of three point five eight feet. Um, that's an existing condition. It's a pump, it's the corner of the front porch. And that's not going to change. But what that is doing is it's, uh, it's creating a variance for the total side setback. Uh, because you'll see that all the other setbacks that we are, of the proposed addition are all exceeding what the, the minimum side setbacks are. But when you do the total, you have to still use the three point five eight. And therefore, that's why we need a variance for the total setback, although each individual setback is compliant.
So. So, Mr. Condors, if you were to measure on the left and right side of what you propose to add, you would conform to the total. But when you grab the lowest, which is in the front, pre-existing non-conformity, that then throws you off.
That's correct. Thank you. Yes, that was my question.
I'm sorry. Does that include the patio?
Which, the rear patio?
Rear patio.
Yeah, those setbacks are also compliant, yes. So that's one of the variances that we're, uh, we're asking for. Uh, the other variance is for the habitable floor area. Um, now, one of the, one of the revisions that I made to these plans is, uh, after some back and forth with, uh, Mr. Rizzo, uh, it was determined that we need to include the basement, um, which is a fairly recent ordinance change. Um, and so that's something that I neglected to do originally. So I, I, if I measure the basement to the outside of the block walls, uh, it's an additional six hundred and fourteen square feet. So that has to go into our habitable floor number, which brings it up to thirty-seven twenty. Um, that basement has been there for, along the house, it's been there. Uh, it's a parple basement.
Mr. Condors, have you made any assumptions or measurements, um, as far as the?
I, I took some quick field measurements today and, and from what I can see, we are above that thirty inch. We're probably at thirty-two, thirty-three inches, so we are exceeding that thirty inch.
So short of providing survey information, you, you stay measured, you feel like you're over it, conservative, that you're going to go with.
We're going to go with the, uh, with counting the basement.
Yeah, and, and there's no addition to the, to the base.
No, no, in fact, the, the addition is not going to have a basement number, the proposed addition. Right, it's going to continue to be across this.
So I just want to make sure that the board understands the issue so that we can kind of set it to the side and look at the application as originally designed. And then we can look at the basement independently. So we dealt with this recently with the pre-existing basement. The first floor elevation requirements now establish a new line. It used to be fifty percent or under. Uh, well, let me just avoid that. We changed the standard. As a result of changing the standard, what was previously not habitable area is now habitable area. So the addition is independent of how we consider that basement area. And so as we're looking at the proposed square footage of the house, you can look at that with or without the basement, but be mindful that they're not doing anything new to the basement, which is the intent of the ordinance, so as to keep structures at a minimum level above the ground.
That's correct. And it doesn't change the fact that we need the variance for, uh, maximum habitable floor area. It's just that, you know, the, the numbers are, are higher than what we had initially hoped. We had initially not counted the basement area. But not only do we count the basement area for what is proposed, right? And we have to count it for what, what exists.
Right, and for the board's reference, if you're looking at my, uh, review letter number two, the numbers in here for square footage exclude the basement. Because until today, I didn't know that number. So when Mr. Condors goes through the technical square footage for the variance, that's going to include the basement? Yeah, my letter, Dylan.
Let me just ask a couple of questions about the basement. You said you're not adding any new basement. It's six hundred plus square feet. What is the ceiling height in the basement and how is it currently finished, if at all?
It, it is partially, partially finished. Uh, it has about a seven foot ceiling and, uh, the entire six hundred square feet is not finished, but, uh, that's, I counted everything because it all counts.
So a portion of it is finished. Does it have windows?
Uh, yes, it does.
Egress or just, uh, transom?
Uh, just, just regular basement. There's no, no, no walls. Just, yeah, just regular.
We can go back to it if something comes up, but I can establish.
Very good.
Okay. That, sure. Doc, I mean, with regard to your key on that document, we have the habitable, maximum habitable floor area. You're saying that number excludes the basement at this point?
Yes.
Well, on this particular set of plans that we parked today, seven, I do have the basement included. Uh, but the one you had, uh, the one you had is an audience.
Right.
Give me the total number of that, with the basement.
Three thousand seven hundred and twenty.
Three thousand seven two zero. Thank you.
And, and one more thing with that real quick is that the basement is a half-story. So, and real quick, do you have a half-story attic, one with a pull-down?
There's a pull-down, but, uh, the, the ceiling height at the highest point is four feet, so.
So the smallest would be a half-story attic, right?
Right.
So half-story attic, half-story basement, two floors gets you to three floors, which is an existing condition. But it's, it's not the line, it's just a condition.
Everybody understand that. It can be two and a half stories. If you go three, you need a variance. The half-story is the cellar, uh, but it's, a basement becomes a half. A cellar is a zero.
Correct.
And then the attic is a half. So if you add them up, it's three. The existing condition is three, so to, to clean up anything, it has to be considered in terms of how we view it.
Thank you. And probably the additional number you were about to ask for is the existing square footage, right?
Right, yes, because the basement also is included in the existing square footage now. Which is two thousand six hundred and sixty-four. Okay. Which brings that existing above the, the maximum habitables as well, as an existing condition.
Correct.
So the delta's the same floor is. Um, I can just walk you through the plan real quick from the intent here. Um, this is a very, it's, it's an old house, a hundred years old plus. Um, it has a very sort of awkward second floor. Uh, there's only one bathroom on the second floor. There's three bedrooms and a small little nook in the front of the house that's only accessible from the front bedrooms. Uh, it's currently being used as an office. So, um, there's no master bedroom. There's no, um, there's no second bath on the second floor. So this, uh, the addition that we propose is providing a master suite, uh, an additional bedroom slash office. Uh, the front of the house will remain pretty much intact. Um, and those two bedrooms are still wanting to share that nook of their own. But it's, uh, it's only accessible through the bedrooms. So we're really only, you know, the, the, the addition is really, it's only about, uh, it's twenty by twenty roughly, twenty by seventeen. Uh, that's happening at the rear of the house. We are using the area that's currently an enclosed porch, so that's also becoming habitable. Um, but this addition really won't be, be seen from the road. It's all happening behind the house. The height is, uh, coming in at thirty, excuse me. The height of the addition is twenty-five foot nine, so it's well below the, uh, the required height. And on the first floor, uh, we created a family room in the rear and the house also has kind of an awkward layout on the first floor. The kitchen's in the front of the house. So we moved the kitchen to the back and created a family room, uh, again in that twenty by seventeen addition.
And Tony, I had mentioned that in, in my opening remarks, we could listing off size of fifteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-four square feet. The ground's half, five thousand is minimum required. So, so just confirming, right, we are, we are, um, well below even in the, in, in the proposed condition for lot coverage, right?
That's correct.
Coverage, yeah, the floor area, right? Even counting the basement, right? We still fall well below.
Uh, floor area ratio.
Yeah, right, point two two and, uh, point four.
And also, right, exactly, okay. Um, and building, well, nothing affect that. We're still.
Twelve, twelve, yeah.
Twelve point nine, ten, thirty-five is permitted, so. So what's, what's happening here is we've got an oversized lot, narrow, and, but we are over on the maximum floor area. Right, that's correct.
Uh, Mr. Condors, can you just give us the split? The, the first floor you said was twenty by seventeen, which is three hundred and forty square, or you said you folded in a porch as well. What's the total, total square footage of the additional, um, floor area on the first floor?
Uh, four hundred and sixty.
Okay, and then that leaves you with how much for the second?
Five hundred and ninety-five, and it kind of overlaps the, the back of the house.
Any other questions for Mr. Condors?
Um, the only question for Scooter is the property's adjacent. Um, obviously, I'm looking at air lines up in space to the back. Uh, how will they be affected by, by this? Are they getting the same front yard setback plane in the existing? The base setback in the street, do you have any?
I don't have the information on setbacks of the existing, the adjacent properties I have. The, on your area over there.
Is there an area?
Well, there's, there's a key map here. Um, it looks like, right, there's, there's a mixture of setbacks. But again, we're not, we're not doing anything in front. Everything's happening well to the rear, so, correct.
I'm just thinking if the other house are pushed further back, then you'll have a, it's, it's to the advantage for them to be at, at the same front yard.
Right, yeah, at least to, to the north, they all appear to be, um, lined up with, with the, the subject property.
Okay, thanks.
How many, how many linear feet is, is in the addition, including the, uh, the, your covered porch?
It's not covered, yeah.
It's not covered. Well, how many, how many linear feet?
Like, how far back are we going?
Yeah.
Seventeen, seventeen feet.
You want to know the total? Okay, no.
From the existing rear wall, we're going back seventeen.
Okay. Mr. Condors, why don't you tell us about your architectural design? Because the, the house is, um, certainly very, uh, distorted looking from the front. Can you help us understand, you know, how you thought about the design? It's got fifty percent square footage that we typically see on a fifty-foot wide lot. Um, how did you sort of think this through and come up with what came up?
Right, well, I definitely, my intent was to preserve the, uh, this bungalow style, if you want to call it that, uh, of the house. Uh, so I, I wanted to keep the height down. I didn't want the, the rear to distract from the, from the look of the front. Um, although these, these roof lines, the roof line of these. Um although these these roof lines, the roof line of the existing house does create some, some difficulties with the spaces inside. So I did wanna at least give them full of stimulants uh in in the added areas, so, but again, try to keep the roof lines down. Uh and keep the height low, so it all. Don't really show them the street.
And what's the total length of the house from the front of the porch to the to the rear of the new addition?
Six uh sixty, seventy.
Mr. Kandor, so on the south, on the first floor, the south, I guess the south side, that three foot six jargon, is that existing?
It is existing, yeah, it's a corner of the front porch.
Okay, and then you're making a similar one with the new addition on the north side, right?
A similar.
No, I'm looking towards the back there, so that three foot six notch on the on the north side and then there. But I see it's cut in on the right side.
It's cut in, yeah.
Yeah, that's existing though, that cut in, right?
This cut in is existing.
Okay, that's, and and. And you're holding that line and then maybe.
Right, and by the time, because the line is skewed, by the time you get to the back, this the setbacks open up and we're well over what's required.
Right.
Yeah.
So the new addition on the, well, my point being the new addition on the north side is further away from the neighbor than than it's not along the existing, the existing. You've got an extra three foot six.
Look, I'm not sure if I understand, you're asking, but the three foot six is on the south side.
No, no, I'm not talking about the setback, I'm talking about the house actually coming in like this as you go from the back.
Yes, yes, it does come in, yes.
So the end result, I covered this earlier, just to make sure I've got it right. The end result is that if you were to measure the two side yard setbacks at at the rear addition, that you would conform.
Yeah.
To the combined side yard requirements.
Yes.
And so you have made up for that in the back, and it is merely the deviation in the front, pre-existing problem, it creates the.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
It's it's one side that's existing, one side is proposed, that's why we have to use it as total proposed.
And the existing, with the existing that's that's extended, is all conforming?
Yes. Not not with the total, well, yes. If you if you use those numbers in the total, they wouldn't conform, yeah.
But if you measured left and right as you move down the house, every bit of the new addition conforms to the total. It's simply the fact that you need to grab the lowest number that creates the variance.
Yes.
Yes, side setbacks of the new addition are eleven and twelve point six seven respectively.
Seven and.
Or seven and iron, yeah.
Seven, so sixteen's a total.
Yes.
Mr. Brodsky, you're seeing this as a C two variance?
I am.
You gonna walk us through that?
Yeah, so so, you know, well, I think, I actually, I think with uh we can talk about C one a little bit as well. Um because we do have an irregularly shaped lot, which is a long, narrow lot, which is also skewed, so there are. Especially with respect to the side setbacks, we've got a, we've got a side, we've got a, you know, a lot, we have a lot with that flies. But based on the size of the lot is is relatively narrow. Uh so, and uh so from a C one perspective, I think there are existing conditions uh. Uh attributable to the site that would support a C a C one brand. With respect to C two, you know, I think you hear from uh Tony's testimony, the benefits, uh there there are no detriment, right? So in terms of the benefit, we're proposing, we're proposing um a uh an addition. That increases the functionality, modernizes the interior so that it's usable, and so that, so that the owners. Uh can utilize it, so there are benefits there. Um there's no detriment to the zone plan from our perspective, especially since the proposed addition complies in all respects. With the setbacks on on either side. Um uh so that there's no, you know, no detrimental impact for to any of the property owners specifically with respect to the property owner on the other side. Um with respect to the deviation from uh uh the maximum square footage uh exceedance that we had. Um who, you know, again, we've got this, we've got this undersized lot, and so. Um even though we comply and 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 fall well within the requirements. For, you know, virtually all of the other bulk requirements, including floor area ratio or building coverage, lot coverage. Um I I think it's, I, you know, it's our position that this property's based on its size, being three times, over three times. Uh the size of the, you know, the lot size required, can certainly handle uh this four hundred square foot addition to the home. Which gets it up, which gets it up to, you know, a a modest square footage um of. Twenty-six sixty-four, uh I'm sorry, of thirty-one hundred and six square feet, thirty-seven hundred and twenty square feet with regard, uh uh with, including the base. So again, with respect to um with respect to that aspect of the application. You know, the benefits obviously are to um with the functionality of the home, et cetera. Um no negative impact we don't see with with respect to the zone plan zoning ordinance of any of the uh neighboring property.
It seems to me the negative impact is that we're in an R five zone, and so regardless of the fact that the lot's oversized, every lot in that neighborhood is oversized in exactly the same way. I think that with regard to the the zone plan and the negativity about developing in this way, you've got a long house. And it creates effectively a poor, you do wind up with a with a. An impact on air light and open space. I I I'm interested in where the front yard setbacks line up, particularly with regard to the southern property to your southern boundary. Because it appears to me that that house is set considerably behind you. And that effectively, I'm wondering where you're gonna land in the back relative to where they are. Just imagine this, right, so in an R five twenty-two hundreds, you got a thousand eleven hundred square foot footprint. If you were going twenty feet beyond your neighbor to the rear, the detriment is that on a fifty-five, fifty-foot lot. If I go to my back deck and I look out to the left toward this house, no longer gonna see anything other than house. And I think that is certainly something to consider. I'm interested in how you land, what I heard from you, which I think is is offsetting, is that you kept the the ridge height down. You've maintained the character of the house from the front, you've intentionally kept the house low so as to not disturb the streets there. I also understand that in the interior, you're taking a a kitchen, which is in the front, which is not the traditional development design. You're gonna move it to the back, so you're gonna add that extra space, and upstairs, you said you were gonna leave. The existing bedrooms and move your master bedroom, something more um commonly built today, into the new addition area. So I I'm I'm hearing a lot of things where you tried to work around the idea that this house is going to be extended. Um like, I'll make sure I'm correct on the things that you that I understood you to represent, and I'm interested in where you land in the back.
Fortunately, I don't have the uh setbacks of the adjoining property to the south, so I. Put on your uh.
This um.
Neither.
And you like an upset, yeah, it's not really an area.
Okay, so the first picture in this, what what is this exhibit?
I assume it's A six.
So the first picture in A six shows a garage on the right-hand side of the photo. And a two-tone house, white glow fireplace in blue, the house with the blue and the white is the subject house, correct?
Yes.
So it would seem to me, just eyeball admit, that the garage, which appears to be the base of the house to your south, lines up approximately with your fireplace. Is that fairly safe to say?
Yes.
Okay, so your house already sits proud of that house by, can you give me a measurement from that fireplace to the front of your porch?
Say uh what uh eighteen feet, seventeen eighteen feet.
Okay, and your total length of your house is, did you say sixty-three or sixty-seven?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven, so you're roughly fifty feet back, these rough numbers, but fifty feet back from what I'm. Suspect is about where the front of the house you sat. Is that, is that fair?
Fifty feet behind the front of the adjacent house with the garage, yes.
Right, okay, so I I'm just trying to.
Yep.
Anybody else understand?
Yeah, yeah.
So you already got eighteen feet in the front, that already exists that way, so now you've got proposal of fifty feet behind that. I don't know if we have an an aerial from from Google, which might help.
They were saying it's gonna dominate on the front and the rear, if you look to the north, whatever that is, right, they were easterly. It's gonna be a small house, so your experience is correct.
I I think that what's gonna happen is that when you land in the back, assuming that that house is. Similar in size to the others around it, that you're not extending a full thirty feet behind, what do you got?
So the Google map I'm looking at, hold up today, the date, and it is a. I mean, I'm, it's like a hodgepodge of different deaths and, you know, it's 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 a kind of an up and down.
I think looking at the property to the south, the one that's set further back.
Yeah.
I think once you've had the addition, you may line up with the back of that house, that house, we're not, we're not even hitting, we're not even hitting, that house is so far back.
I realize it's 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 twenty. It's a little bit, it's a little bit of everything.
Capacity, I'd say it's twenty-five, it'll be twenty-five foot differential, so it's seventeen, depending on where the patio on the deck lands or whatever.
I don't think it could be an issue, yeah, it's not.
That's right, it's gonna be, that's right.
Yeah.
Are you replacing the existing garage, are you keeping the existing garage?
Keeping the existing.
Okay.
I use Langline, but it's the same. Better than twelve.
Yeah, I don't think it's. That was my concern as well, but I don't think you got that one, it's way better.
That, and and Mr. Kandor, with regard to the second floor, it are the plans developed um far enough to be able to represent to the board. That the existing three bedrooms on the second floor are gonna remain as-built?
Uh while the existing two bedrooms in the front, uh let me have to do that again. There's there's currently two bedrooms in the front of the house, and then there's a little nook that's being used as an office. Those three rooms will remain, although I wouldn't call that front room, the bedrooms. Um there is currently a bedroom on the back of the house, but it's like under an attic, so that's where we're taking the roof off and and building the addition. But yeah, the front half, let's just say the front half of that house will remain intact.
Yeah, Mr. Brodsky, I think that that supports more of a, more of a C one argument, because you're working around the existing conditions, you're not fully renovating. You don't have an opportunity to create new, more modern spaces, you're leaving those bedrooms as they are, and there's some efficiency.
Yes.
What you said. Okay?
That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Um any board members have any questions or comments? Seeing no takers, um are there any members in public that have any questions or comments with regard to the Doyle application?
Well, no questions, just a comment.
Come on, come on forward, you wanna be able to pick up on this microphone? So I'm afraid I just wanna give the board the truth, hopefully, with the truth.
Yes. My wife is.
Okay.
There's no amplification.
There's no amplification.
I'll speak up, no worries.
You also swear the testimony you gave before the board to be truthful, hopefully, with the truth, just state your name, so I can spell your last name, please.
Nicholas Hall, H A L L.
Uh, Lundy Hall.
Welcome.
Hello, we are the Doyle Neighbors, uh one oh seven Harrison Avenue. Uh they've invited silver, we've taken a detailed look at their plans. Uh we're fully in support of the addition that they're doing, we think it makes a lot more sense to. Keep it aside of the doing, keep the character of a hundred-year-old house, and add the space that they need, uh we've been inside the house as well. Very oddly built with a kitchen setup in the upstairs, so. Um we think it might take a lot of sense, should allow them, their the two kids, we have two kids as well. Uh the room to live and grow within the community, and it makes a lot of sense, we support it. Um just wanted to formally state that for the board.
Mr. Hall, which which house is yours when you look at that house from the front, the one on the right or the one on the left?
We are the one on the left.
The one on the left, the one we haven't talked about so far, right?
Right.
So how does the front of your house line up with the existing structure on the Doyle property?
Exact, almost straight on.
How about the rear?
Uh we go back a little bit further, we have some patio back there. But I wouldn't really include that, um we can go back a little further than that, but it's pretty, pretty even, I think, for the most part.
And the extension is gonna be seventeen feet beyond where the house is now, and so when you step out the back of your house and you look to the south. Are you all concerned that the massing of the structure in that space is gonna create problems?
No.
As Mr. Hall.
Uh no, I don't believe so, because uh as you uh were talking about, one eleven was set back in the front further. It also goes back in the back further, so this renovation, it won't go past that house, so we see a house already. Yeah, um so it's not gonna make any difference really, yes.
So when you look to the south and you see that house at one eleven, I mean, wh- what are you looking at, like an entire room, is it maybe twenty feet, is it more, less?
It's a pretty good amount of house, we just see kind of like the siding of their house.
We also don't have a lot of visibility way out the back, to be honest, so we don't really see much of any, they have trees and. Um and we we don't have windows that that go in those directions really.
Okay.
Uh downstairs, you know, we're, we're in a house anyway right now, we have a lot on the back deck, there's a back patio. It's uh, you know, we're in our own little space anyway at that point, so we go down some steps, so we're we're not concerned.
Any existing problems with water drainage over there, are there any uh finding pooling issues, things that the neighbors have been dealing with with regard to uh stormwater?
There has been some water, but nothing too concerning, we've never had any flooding issues personally. Um.
I don't know, but just to be fair, I don't mean in your house, I mean, just kind of around, you there, you're not struggling with issues as waters?
We are not, no.
Anything else?
Um I just have two letters that were written by other neighbors that I would like to read.
Oh, Mr. Kovacs will deal with that.
I don't know.
Uh we generally don't take that, because I can't cross-examine those folks, I could cross-examine you, not. But generally, our policy is we would not take those letters in. Um we'd rather have the folks come and participate and and tell them these things, otherwise we end up sometimes having a hearing by petition.
Yeah, unfortunately, couldn't be here today, so we figured we'd just try to.
I can say that um the Doyle's invited us all over at the same time, so we were in the company of these neighbors in person. Uh when we went over the plans, and they seem to have no problem with this addition.
And and the letters tend to keep the same, that they're in support.
Hello, how are you, your son, you got it in? Problems, Mr. Brodsky?
I didn't know that.
Next to the point, we did not discuss um drainage.
No, we're not, okay, you guys good?
We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, please?
It's morning.
Sure, you saw Mr. testimony, before we go to be truthful, sir?
Yes, my name is Stephen Knowlton, K N O W L T O N, at seventy-seven Church Street in Fairhaven.
Mr. Knowlton, we haven't seen you in a long time.
Right.
You used to be here a fair amount, welcome.
Thank you. Um. My concern is trying to keep the R five zones working, so the town is affordable. And keep adding, if the neighbors like it, you do it, I I that doesn't. It doesn't go with me, I mean, we need to keep housing affordable, and. I've got a deep lot. Theoretically, if approach your court or an improved road, I could subdivide it and put another house back there, and I'm interested in that. I'm interested in lower density, and we build it up. And perhaps. There was, there's another option of adding the space by going up and reducing the uh, keeping it within the. The twenty-five hundred square feet, twenty-two hundred square feet. Um that's just one thought, it's um. Why not do it that way, it'll, it'll, and if the property won't be as valuable. Um. That those are my basic concerns, there are some things, and I just noticed, um, took took a percentage wise, uh twenty-two hundred square feet. Um thirty-one oh six, and I think. Maybe if you add the basement, you've got even more space, um just thirty-one oh six, that's a forty-one percent increase in floor area. So I got my math right, that's a big, big jump. It's a nice house. Um the tractor from the front. It will look different on the side. Was thinking from an environmental viewpoint, a bigger house requires more energy to run. It's, it's environmentally responsible, it's a smaller house. When you have in Fairhaven lots that are R five, that could be built to be um more environmentally responsible. to be more environmentally responsible. And we went overboard, and we've got solar panels and so forth and so on, and thick walls and but anyway, those were my thoughts, um nothing against building a house looking like that in a larger lot, we have places, uh lots in town that are allowed for that kind of square footage. And probably my comments would apply to other things that are coming before the board continuously, where people say it's a hardship because we've got a deep lot or um over on Fairhaven Road, um they spent six hundred fifty thousand for the lot, um oh that lot's gonna sell for, built a million something rather, and let's try to keep the the housing in town affordable. Close my only comments.
Thank you. I I look, I I think there's no question that the points you raise are 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 valid concerns that the board needs to consider. Certainly from a planning perspective, the affordability of of housing is an issue that the borough considers, you know, at multiple levels. At the same time, on the other side, you've got a piece of property that's sixteen thousand square feet. And so if this property were in the R five, uh R R fifteen or R twenty zone in comparison, the house that you'd be permitted to build would be substantially larger uh than the house that's there today. And so under the the C one criteria, we've discussed issues about working around um some of the existing structural problems related to a house that's about a hundred years old and trying to figure out, you know, how to find a balance between modernizing the house as we need to do, if the house is gonna stay there, or if it's gonna be raised entirely and rebuilt. Um and then with regard to the C two criteria, what we're trying to do is we're trying to balance the unique nature of this lot versus the fixed nature of the zone itself, without any consideration of the specifics of the lot. The Harrison Road lots are a challenge and have always been a challenge, and we have seen a number of them. Um and I think that your your points are entirely valid, and I think that there are some other factors that need to be weighed by the board. Um and uh we appreciate your comments.
Yeah, I'm I'm not concerned about the side setbacks um that's existing, but it's it's just adding more and more building on that lot. Which will make it uh much more valuable.
So look, if you look at the density of this house relative to the lot as proposed, it will be substantially less dense than most of the lots in Fairhaven. Um and so adds to the environmental impact of the improved structure relative to the land area um if you were to evaluate it on its own. Um under certain metrics, you could see this as being entirely reasonable, which is where the C two variance kicks in. Um I think that the side yard setbacks are particularly important because when you look at this from a planning perspective, if you allow people to build substantially longer houses, you are going to impact those neighboring lots. And I, to me, that's that's one of the most important things, I'm trying to figure out whether something like this could work. But myriad issues to consider, um and the board needs to balance them all.
You're carrying me out.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, um does the board have any other questions or comments before we uh ask Mr. Brodsky to close? And move on to delivery, I I I know that I just sort of thought about the idea of drainage, Mr. Brodsky, is there anything proposed with regard to underground detention?
Not not from my end, but we we will have an engineer who can that we can still do it here.
Yeah. Lot coverages are being affected a little?
I'm asking the question. But there is an existing dry well on the site, right, that's uh currently being utilized.
Way in the back.
Yeah, yeah. In the middle, if you go behind the garage, the end of the proper line, probably halfway. There's a garage, the back of the line.
So in in the in the picture that you have the blue garage, that's
are there pipes to go to that, or is it just?
From the garage?
Garage from the house, the pipe.
Oh, they go all the way back? Oh, wow, okay.
So in this picture that I'm showing you, it appears to be page six of the images of of the ASICS. This is the lot that you're talking about. And so it's beyond that?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
But the pipes run from the house gutters to that drywall to be installed.
So what's gonna happen with the roof leaders from the new addition, are you proposing to put them into the same drywall?
My intention to, our intention to do.
Okay, and so
if it needed, we can install a second. I have every intention of keeping all the water with me. Right, I've had any issues with water um backing up to the roof leaders or bubbling out of the drywall near your ear? Um we did have, we did have a uh couple of years ago, we had an issue with our basement, some pump backed up. That's why we installed the drywall, the fact that the there's just too much water, right, and so that's why we put the travel into move the water in the property before that, the the gutters have been plenty long, the grass right on the house, right on the foundation, so we installed that for two mitigate the water. So my question is in terms of just No, no. Your knowledge at size adequately.
But but Mr. Rizzo, with a lot of this size, um the idea that we're gonna pipe the water all the way back has to be some sort of an improvement to actually having that water hit the surface right here where all the other houses are.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
So
Let's forget the capacity of the pipe running that longer distance to which adds the best effective capacity of the drywall.
So, Mr. Brodsky, so my question was whether or not anything's proposed as to drainage. What I'm understanding the applicant to say is that the proposal to run the new roof leaders to the existing drywall. I I don't wanna misstate what your client just said, but I think that's what he said.
That's what he said, and he also said if there's any determination that an additional dry well is necessary, they're willing to. Will you provide a note on the plans stating that the roof leader to the issue will time?
Yes, sir.
Any trees to be removed for the?
Nope.
No.
So one of the pictures I saw, I didn't think about it. It's the one near the garage.
Right.
But that's not gonna be affected because you're not developing a one back there, right?
Correct. I mean, that is maybe to go at some point. For our compromises.
Okay. Uh any more questions or comments with regard to the application? Okay. Mr. Brodsky, have anything closing?
Just just real, just real briefly, just wanted to reiterate um that uh and the board had heard it a couple of times. You know, these these lots will have been have have always been an issue just due to their configuration, a significantly oversized lot. Um especially where we're looking at a situation where um the existing house is to remain, so I think that based on the testimony that that's uh been provided to the board, um there there has indeed been a thoughtful process implemented to uh modernize the house, right, and increase that functionality uh while working with the existing existing location of the home, without really exacerbating any of the uh uh certainly not any exacerbating any of the side setback um requirements. Uh I think based on the size of the house, it's safe to say uh as as, you know, the typical addition of overbuilding floor area ratio, lot coverage, building coverage, not only does does this proposal comply with all of those, but um you know, is well below that which is permitted in the zone. For all those reasons, I think that the the property is well can handle this proposed addition, and it enables the homeowners to be able to stay uh in the home with their family um and not be in a position on any of the neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Brodsky. Discussion?
When I, when I first looked at this, this lot corresponds more with the with the R fifteen zone. And the R fifteen zone has a uh maximum floor area of about three thousand four hundred square feet, and this is, and this is even more than that. However, looking at the uh, you know, the setbacks for the addition are are all conforming. Uh the building addition is entirely in the rear, which doesn't impact the look from the front. Uh it doesn't impact the neighboring lots, and I think the aesthetics of the house are definitely plus. So that's my that's my two cents on the issue, and I think I think overall it's a nice project.
Yeah, I'll go, I'll go next, same, I mean, very similar, to me, the fact that it doesn't uh, you know, trip a lot of the ratios is kind of irrelevant, right, it goes back so far. For me, what's important is where it sits, the neighbors, how it it's oriented. And I think we all proved that it's really not gonna be a big imposition to the neighbors in the rear. No one wants to go outside, right, and see a block of house behind them. Uh so I think it's a nice design, uh and yeah, overall supportive of it, and uh I think it's a great idea to drive all preemptively, because it's a big hot button issue in the town, and no one wants the water uh on the property, so I think that's a huge plus. So, there's done.
Not much to add, I think, uh obviously working with the structure that's, I think I heard from a hundred and fifty years old or from more, we don't want to lose a house like that in town. I think it's awesome that the applicants are trying to work with the house, and uh I think they did a nice job. Mr. Condor has really tried to mitigate, I think, with height and roof lines, and I'm in support of the application.
Yeah, I don't have much more to add. Using the old house, I'm always a big fan of that, and that notes up, we know that that's your square foot advantage is quite often, because you could knock it down and build a twenty two hundred square, pull back in two and a half, that we've seen many times on the. Um I appreciate keeping the old house, and and especially if you can lessen the impact to the neighbors, I think that's fine.
We got a conference, Alan. About a conference, Mr. Sheed, ready yet?
I agree with whatever you said, I always wanna leave the renovation rather than the fairdown, and working um with the design and putting it in back, I think is a great, is a great thing.
I can tell all that, um I appreciate your concerns, Mr. Knowlton, but uh you know, we wanna renovate houses in Fairhaven, and I think this is a good renovation. And I know you have concerns about what's going on, but you younger families moving into town are gonna want these types of things. It fits within our plan, fits within the master plan, they're they're saving a hundred nine year old house and renovating as opposed to carrying it down and putting up something else, which we see around town, so I fully support this.
Also think the basement's irrelevant, right, it's off by a few inches and it's
Yeah.
Maybe we rather, rather people start to, you know, quietly, lightly mound up the house to avoid it, I think not, right, so.
No, and this is what ideally we want, as a renovation, not a complete you know, rebuilding.
We're gonna say cookie cutter.
Yeah.
Cambridge, AV.
To talk to Robert's observation about the R fifteen zone, it does fit in with the square footage, your fifteen thirty four hundred, thirty one hundred. We can look at that, we're a little bit of a guidance, I know they didn't choose to upzone, but I think I think that we can look at that someday.
Well, they can upzone, I look, I I think the uh the size of lots is a bit of a head fake. Um the truth is that this house needs to make sense without understanding how deep the lot goes, and so I I think we talked about it, and I think that it critically addresses where that addition would make sense in light of the houses around it. If this were a new proposal, brand new from scratch, thirty one hundred square feet, I would feel completely different. Um and I just wanna make that observation. Um I think it's important that it is not going to be thirty feet behind the houses on either side of it, I think that that is a significant issue. Um and I think that they've done a nice job making sure that that uh facade is preserved. I also think it's important with regard to meeting the criteria for the approval, that they are going to preserve the second floor as it sits. And I think the efficiency of renovating a structure is important for us to consider, those are legitimate hardships to work around. It might be easy to say, hey, you could do this, that, or the other, but you know, you're talking about, you know, a lot of money, and it's not ours. And and certainly trying to figure out a way to modernize a house uh while balancing the the uh the struggles of what you're working with, is something we're always, always thinking about.
And respecting the history of it to make sure it doesn't become another cookie cutter house.
I think that's right. That's right. Um I think it's important, number one, that um with regard to any approval, that the second floor uh be maintained um as it's reflected on the plans, the existing veterans. I think it is um also important um that any approval uh make mention of the commitment with regard to the underground detention, um either piping it to the existing system or adding a new system to the extent that that's necessary, um and it's important certainly that location. And I think that having it back behind the garage is important, because if it were to fail, it's gonna fail way back there, and it isn't gonna affect the neighbors.
Also a motion.
Right, it wasn't. But we do need them.
Okay, well, I will make a motion to approve the uh Doyle application as submitted with the stipulation that the veterans be maintained on the second floor as the leader has outlined it, consistent with the plan, consistent with the plans. And as well as the dry well uh addition should be required to be tied into the existing dry well system and a second if necessary.
I will, if we done?
Yeah, also, yeah, I see, and and the um, do we have the correct square footage now?
That's a good point, um the six hundred fourteen square feet is at this point really just taking their word for it, so I would wanna see a plan showing that number.
Right, and so the uh, so the numbers are accurate in both.
Uh wait, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you, um so we had passed, um what do we, here's what I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about throwing a number out there with regard to the square footage, uh changing what is currently a basement to a living level and create, and we also need to address the three stories. But I I didn't we stipulate that we did not recognize the um transition of that space to habitable or um floor area in in a previous resolution for the purpose of trying not to artificially increase the overall square footage so as to not throw the assessor off?
Oh, good point, yeah.
There's just no reason to.
Yes, yes, I do recall it.
So so um well, I I guess I would flag it for the purpose of maybe Mr. Kovat's considering it. Uh maybe we can add something into the resolution, both acknowledging what we understand the final number to be once we get some measurements, but also acknowledging um that we see this as the thirty one of six um and that it's simply a the quirk of the ordinance with regard to the basement.
Yeah, I think we did it on blind place, actually, for the same reason.
Yeah, I I I we we've gotta figure out what we're doing with it, but I think we all recognize that it wasn't a big factor here, and it shouldn't be. No, it's no need to hire a tax.
Mr. Chair, you're comfortable with um including that in the resolution, once we confirm it after tonight?
I I
Exact number?
I think it has to be, because I think that it's technically uh floor area. But I think that I wanna amplify in the resolution that we're not considering it for floor area in a traditional sense, that we're trying to comply with the strict um definitions, um but that it's been observed that it's a preexisting condition that's simply changed based on a change in.
Mr. Condor, she can provide that ahead of any resolution?
So the, are you talking about the six hundred fourteen number, I mean, that was calculated, it's on these plans, so what further calculation?
Maybe give Mr. Rizzo a letter that will actually, with your signature on it, that actually states exactly what the interior measurements are. And maybe we also need the four corners with tape measurement on what it, what it is above existing grade?
So they're taking the conservative approach that with the tape measure, um it's over thirty inches. So it can't be any worse than that.
So we'll just call it that?
Yeah, I think, I mean, spend money to survey it to show that it's over thirty inches is is the same thing.
All right, Mr. Condor wants to keep his license, and he starts writing letters with crazy numbers. We can rely on a number from Panif, he puts it in a letter to you with the signatures.
But we'll also submit the revised plan.
Right, exactly, which has, which will be sealed.
All right, unless you motion, but we I interrupted, we never gonna sign.
Five seconded, actually.
Oh, thank you. Yes.
Yes. Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Porte?
Yes, I said connect this.
Dr. Locker?
Yeah. Yes. Yes. Thank you.
Congratulations. Board's gonna take a five minute comfort break?
It's a land speed.
Yeah.
That's good. Okay, we're gonna get ready to start again. Um let the record reflect that Mr. Leader is recusing himself on the
Um, let the record reflect that Mr. Leader is recusing himself on the Conhegan issue. And that's the next time I don't get it. Conhegan eleven forty terrace.
We're gonna call that, let me spread the following on the record. I did have a conversation earlier in the day with council. Uh, obviously, large to the D variances. We do this. I swear everybody in, because you're all standing there waiting. Raise your right hand, so I'm still defensive before the board being truth or hold truth, nothing but the truth. The same usual instruction that I, that I give before, when you start speaking, please spell your, state your name, spell your last name to the record. I'm gonna relax now at this.
Oh wait, Mr. Rizzo has not returned.
He has not returned.
Let's uh. You can swear.
Because we're gonna, we swear everybody.
We won't start until Mr. Rizzo comes back.
Want to establish, we have jurisdictions in this matter here?
Yes.
We have jurisdiction. So let me do this, um. Spread the following, obviously, uh, we don't have a full complement of the receiving. Council and I spoke earlier in the day. What we proposed to do was start figuring, make a C. Because there's D variances involved, and we confirm the code of five, since we only have like a beer, we got six, right? We've got six. But what we're gonna try to do is go as far as we can this evening. Uh, hopefully we'll get some public comments on, on this matter also. Then I believe we're going to grave time on test carry, and I will make the commitment to the applicant that between now and the next time we schedule it, now, if they don't believe anything we scheduled for, now, and the next time they reschedule it now, those matter, those individuals who could not be here tonight, that do not have a permit, will review the record. We have a process where they can sign a certification indicating that they have reviewed what was done this evening. Make sure that they have reviewed all the documents and that they're prepared to hear the balance of the, of the application and vote on the application. Um, we have that understanding, did I? Did I say that correctly, Mr. President?
You did, you did. I guess there's always a hope that we could get to the end.
If we can, you know, but I, it's, it's your, I, I'm hoping you can get to the end. But I, I, I am loathe to, we have a little more buffer.
Understood, understood.
You have to hit a five hundred, and you really only needed to hit a three. Let me, let me mark the following exhibits that I have so far. Uh, I have the application, listed variances and checklist to say one. I have, have the May twenty nine. Looks like letter of permit denial from uh our co enforcement officer. I have A three is the boundary and topographic survey, that looks like to me dated uh January nineteenth twenty nine, prepared by Insight Survey LLC. I have the A four as engineering submission, five sheets, uh plot plan, instruction details, soil erosion, sediment control plan, uh two sheets of uh S E S C notes um prepared by Insight Engineering LLC, revised to June fourth, twenty twenty four. A five were the architectural submissions, seven sheets, cover sheet, floor plans, um. Let's see if it's seven sheets. If that is as up to four, twenty twenty four. Uh, prepared by Asher and Sean White and Partners LLC. I have Z V one, which is the engineering review letter number one of July fifth, twenty twenty four, by C M E over the signature of Roger Rizzo. I have uh A six, a July thirtieth applicant's engineer letter um from Insight over the signature of Douglas Caland. I have A seven, an update uh of five images proposed for the site. I have A eight floor area diagrams, prepared by the same architect. Uh, second date of July eighth, twenty twenty four. A nine, I have an aerial exhibit which superimposes the proposed structure on the existing uh site and lot. I have A ten. Again, a neighborhood aerial view, which uh also provides a superimposed image of the proposed structure on the lot and within the immediate areas. Do you have any other documents that you wish to have lost?
Um, yeah, so we'll have a couple of exhibits, I believe. We have one. Um, so this is part of the existing home as well as the proposed.
So these are individuals, A eleven, two, existing and proposed.
And put, just put a date on those, those are taken by you then?
Um, they are courtesy of Google Street View.
Gotcha.
Okay. Can you mark them as A eleven for me?
I guess just put today's date on it. Eight one twenty two.
Mark this A August first, twenty twenty four. Any other exhibits?
Well, in your area, it's.
Oh, yeah, you had area. We'll mark A twelve, addition aerial. Um, could you describe generally what that is, so I have a reference?
Uh, an area, an aerial view of the general neighborhood with a, uh, with the property in and of itself highlighted and zone lines, uh, superimposed.
Thank you, if you could mark that A twelve for me? May as well mark them, it's not going to cost us two seconds worth of time.
Existing first.
A thirteen, images. In and about the.
Yes.
Thank, thank you, put today's date on it.
Uh, shall we date those as August first also? And anything else? And your preference, all agree that that's all you have? Okay, great. Um, we did establish jurisdiction anyway, or we said we have.
Yes, please, I'll come up through um. I have, I have a good number listed, color, two of these have already been provided. The ones that are provided are photographs of the property, but then the uh, the property owner's list, the two hundred foot list. The ones that are required tonight are complete floor plans of the existing condition. Um, and that because the house today is going to be launched about the good condition of. Um, second one is detailed calculation of the floor area. Um, that's really just a small schematic showing, I guess, the, the hatch area for each floor and then a sum of each floor. Um, however, my calculation is consistent, so while I would ask that as part of compliance at a later date, and I'll take exception to that today. And then the last three are outside agencies, it's Mountain County Planning Board, uh, Freehold S C D and Monmouth County Health Department. Um, but one out of these that I would expect to be needed is Freehold S C D. So I would ask uh, yeah, to provide that at a later date.
Okay, so you have no objection as to those outside, uh, condition of approval?
That's, yeah, that's correct.
Okay, any objection to that, Father?
No.
And you were so recommend. Okay, I'm done talking.
Thank you. If we could begin, I don't think, I think there's a, a good number, ten or eleven variances, so we could begin by just running through what is what we're seeing and what we're looking for.
Yeah, yeah, what, what, I'll do that. I just want to just give a little background, right, uh, to, to, to get us where we want to be. Um, so the application before you this evening pertains to the property located at eleven, eleven Cooney Terrace. It's an existing single family dwelling. Um, yeah, the uh, the, the proposal before you this evening, and you'll hear testimony uh in, in that, in this regard, is uh to demolish the existing home, replace it with uh, uh, with a new home. Uh, and, you know, various, uh, a new garage, some porch, uh, rear deck and new grating, utilities, drainage and so forth. Um, of course, you know, this, this uh, just a little background, the Conhagans who are here this evening, they they are Fairhaven residents already, they have been, not in this home, but they've been residents since two thousand and seven, raised their two children there who are now grown. And the idea is they found this property uh on the water uh to retire and age into and uh have it large enough for their, for their adult children and their families to come visit and stay. Um, as you see from the plan, the property is significantly undersized, right? Um, it's twelve thousand four hundred and fifteen square feet, right, in your R thirty zone. Right, where thirty thousand square feet is, is required. So it's about point two acres. But there's also some significant slope in the back. Um, so there are, again, uh, significant hurdles and challenges with respect to getting a property that, that uh, or getting a home that works for, for the Conhagans and their families. In addition to the lot area, the existing conditions. Um, the lot width is also significantly undersized for the zone, sixty five feet where a hundred twenty five feet is required in the zone. Um, there's also a slight deficiency with the lot depth at a hundred eight three feet where, where your order is to be R three zone requires two hundred. So as the chair indicated, you know, there, there no doubt about it, there are a, a large, relatively large number of variances associated with the application, but that's to be expected when we're talking about um an undersized lot such as this. Um, and we're working with zoning criteria uh that are based on a thirty thousand square foot property um where we don't have anything close to that. We have a property that's usually less than half of that which is required in the zone. So it's a challenge, right? Um, and I've heard many times from this board that it's preference for to renovation over uh over a raise and rebuild, uh, in fact, quite recently, in fact, a few minutes ago. So, so, um, so the applicant, the professionals are all cognizant of that and aware of it, and you're gonna hear uh why, you know, why that may have reduced uh the, the, the variants necessitated that uh in conjunction with the proposal, uh, if, if there was to be a renovation, there would still always be the existing nonconformities and the significant grading to deal with. Not to mention, you know, the, the E P regulations that apply to this property, which are also, which, you know, required a lot of thought and a lot of ingenuity and work to, to get um, to get the, the comfortable with, with what has had been proposed. Um, but in the end, what you're gonna hear basically is that in addition to the difficulties of trying to renovate this house, at the end of the day, you know, from the applicant's perspective and, and their professionals, the end result is going to be something that's preferable over that which, which exists today, and in fact you will hear that there are a number of existing nonconformities that will be made best, right? Uh, including this guy's setback, including this lot coverage. Now, there are, we do have other variances for F A R and the building coverage, but again, to be no way around it pretty much with, with a lot that we're doing, we're, we're, we're talking about here. In addition um even though we're demolishing this house, we of course made reference to the existing. And so we make reference to the existing setback in front. We make uh reference to how it sits on the lot, and, and most importantly, I think um, if, when you're talking about the additional square footage, right, the additional massing that is being proposed over that which exists today, that's concentrated in the back. Right? So from a street skate perspective, the setback is going to be almost identical to that.
Mr. Brodsky, could I interrupt you for one second, unfortunately? Um, we just had notice from the, from uh, Mr. Atkins, who's here in the next case. Uh, the, if anybody's here for the Goodman case, Goodman case, could you please come forward? Um. Goodman case is a D variance, we only have five voting members tonight, which we do borrow a yes vote, we've just heard back from Mr. Atkins. We're going to carry the um, we make a motion to carry the meeting with no, no need for any notice, is that right?
Correct.
Um, I guess we can go to Sheila, what does next month look like?
Yep, um, two.
Okay. So given that, I can't promise that you're gonna be first, but we will endeavor to put it, put it on um for September. And I think that date is the.
The fifth, September fifth.
So if anyone is here on the Goodman application, the puddle, that matter's not going to be heard this evening. It's going to be carried to September fifth. Don't you set here?
Yes.
September fifth, there is not going to be any new notice sent out under the assumption that if you wanted to be heard, you were here this evening, so now you have that notice, so to speak. Thank you for your patience. I apologize, uh, sometimes, you know, health matters, conflicts, they get in the way. Uh, we're gonna hear your application.
Thanks.
Promise.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Brodsky.
No worries, no worries. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll be quiet in a moment. Um, so we're almost there. So I was talking about the additional massing over that which exists in, in, in the, in the current house, which is focused in the back, it's focused to the rear. So visibility from the street, um, and, and change to the street skate from that perspective um, is minimal, is minimal at best. Um, the uh and, and you're gonna hear as we go through the testimony about, you know, there's a, there's a lot going on in the back of this property today. Um, and, I mean, much of which is going to be removed. Um, and so you'll, you'll hear about, um, you know, and, and if, if anyone was looking at the numbers and wondering how are we um, uh, so significantly reducing lot coverage in the proposal versus what exists? Um, that's why, and you'll hear the detail, you'll hear the detail on that. Um, uh, and answer to your question, just finishing up, uh, I mentioned D E P. I mentioned, I mentioned, I, I didn't mention yet, but I am gonna mention now the seller, in order to, to, to make things work, uh, the basement area, we, we, we only have a height of seven and a half feet proposed, which is not ideal, but you know, another, just another indication of the process that has gone into the proposal in terms of, you know, balancing, trying to respect the zoning, um, comply with D E P regulations and deal with a property that is, you know, significantly undersized. Expensive, but significantly undersized. So bottom line, um you're gonna hear, this, this is, this is not, um, you know, something that is just put together, thrown out there, hoping for the best. Um, a lot of professionals have spent a lot of time working on this to try and, you know, walk that tightrope in terms of what works for the applicant, what works for the neighborhood, um, and, and does not overwhelm the property. We think, we think we've reached that. Um, and so that, that, that's kind of the bottom line on it. Um, so, so I would say yes, we're cognizant of the number of variances, but when you, you hear us, when you hear uh the testimony, you'll understand what, what we're dealing with. Um, so what I'd like to do, I think that covers it. Uh, there are a few other variances, but I mean, that's, that's from the whole group that you heard. Um, and so what I'd like to do, unless the board has any other questions, is I have with me this evening, I have the project engineer, I have the architect, and I also have the planner, see how it goes. But what I'd like to do is have the engineer sworn in, he'll walk the board through the property as it exists today and what's proposed as part of the application.
The engineer is sworn, you want to place credentials on the record? Just keep.
Sure, uh, Mr. Lord, if you would, for the benefit of the record, just set forth your credentials as a professional engineer.
Sure, Patrick Ford, W A R D with Insight Engineering. Um, I have been a licensed professional engineer in the state for eleven years. And uh, in the capacity as an engineer, I've been in front of this board uh multiple times. It's been about a couple of years, I think, the last time I've been here, but I've been covering for multiple times in the past, uh, and boards throughout Montana Ocean County and throughout the state. Um, I have a bachelor's in science, a assistant area at University of Nebraska.
Anybody have issues with Mr. Wood's credentials? By the way, you're quick, man.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, if you would, um, referring to any of the exhibits that are marked, let's start with walking the board through the property as it exists today.
Sure, so we're at the board, although we all know where we are. We're on the north side of Cooney Terrace on the water, between Grange Avenue and Hans Road, a little closer to Grange. Uh, the Grange intersection along the Abstain River. This area of town, as you know, is residential. So Mr. Brodsky stated this is a unique property and that it's personally undersized for the zone it's in. Um, still has some depth, but not meeting the R thirty depth, and has, I think the most unique part is the elevation change. And Mr. Brodsky touched upon it, and I'll be discussing that somewhat at length. From Cooney Terrace down to the, there's an existing concrete bulkhead that makes this U shape at the rear. From Cootie Terrace down to the, there's an existing concrete bulkhead that makes this U shape at the rear. Pointing at A three, it's about seventeen feet foot grade change um to get down to, to the beach in that bulkhead. So the north of that is a small beach area, then actually the border begins, it's somewhat consistent with where the mean high water lines. Um by deed, this property uniquely, since it is waterfront. The deed ends at that concrete bulkhead, particularly with the waterfront property, if you go to that, you know, like there, right now, as we're showing it. And our lot area and all of our zoning analysis is based on the deed of the property, which is to the bulkhead. What that means, and the reason I'm bringing it up, and I always say that on the onset, is that all of the analysis is really conservative. Um there's an argument to be made that we could extend that another ten, fifteen feet waterward to go to the mean high waterline. But that would be more aggressive, if we're looking for the conservative variance relief that we're seeking. So today, as you can see on the property, there's a driveway off Cootie Terrace. There is a one and a half story dwelling, and in the back is really the unique part of what exists today. What we're, what, what are the focuses of what we're trying to rectify here? There is an immense amount of hardscape for what we would call coastal block, block property, something that you actually couldn't get permitted today by the state. Series of terraces, series of retaining walls, um stone in between the walls, pavers in between the walls that leads down to that concrete bulkhead. So the applicants here tonight seeking approval to demolish the existing dwelling. And the associated hardscape, the driveway, the patios, the walkways and the walls. Um to replace that, the applicant's proposing a new single-family dwelling with an attached garage. With rear typical accessory, you know, it's a new driveway, new drywall for the roof front and front, front and rear porches. Walkways and a rear deck covered porch area, which will be described in further detail later. What we're proposing is a two-story home with a cellar. Uh the distance from the finished floor to the average distant grade is thirty inches or less, uh therefore satisfying that cellar criteria in the ordinance definition. Um the cellar will have a rear walkout, the lower, sorry, lower walkout area underneath the rear covered porch, again. Start even more detail in a moment. Um exterior doors were added to the block that were requested by uh Mr. Rizzo. And they're on the exhibit for ease of reference, I'll point that out in a moment. There is no attic proposed, and there's no proposed activity on the rooftop. Again, those were comments from the C and E memo. Uh and the chimney has been said more than forty feet above, we're just trying to touch upon those very early on, and I'm sure we'll be reviewing that. So. The rear yard, that's where I'm gonna start, I'm gonna start actually from rear to front. So the rear yard from the existing house. To the concrete bulkhead is nearly all hardscape, as I said, a series of terrace patios and retaining walls with pavers and stone between them. The applicant actually has similar desires like the D E P does for a property like this, which is that. The restoration of a natural coastal block. This area is technically a coastal block, it's a regulated area by the state, I'm sure we've heard the term. When you're looking to do any work within a coastal block, usually they want you to remove things, because they're there predating the rules. And they're not something that's permissible in D E P's eyes today. The D E P longs for removing any hardscape and proposing a natural vegetated slope surface. And as I said, we have seventeen feet of relief from the front to down to that bulkhead. So what we're proposing, and I'm gonna turn now to A four, which is our block plan, you can see. The left here is the existing conditions view, and a lot of things are being removed, and it's all, it's all included in the existing property. What we're proposing is a rear area that's ventilated and it's sloped. We're removing a very, great deal of that hardscape. Now going to our, our color rendering, I'll show you a little bit closer of what kind of the ground service represents. Obviously, the house is here in yellow and brown, we have the driveway, and then we have a deck and walkway down closer to the water. So you can see the amount of green area that's being restored or re-vegetated. Uh what you'll see on the three D renderings that the architect has prepared, uh which I think are very nice, and give this product a lot of context. With that, we have a variety of plantings down that rear slope. There is a lighter colored uh patch, we'll call it, amongst the plantings, that represents a lighter colored mold. Uh it's not sand, not beach sand, it'll be a mold, a ground treatment. Um in terms of other landscaping, the applicant desires to have typical foundation plantings around the home. Uh front and sides. And for trees, I know, because that's gonna be something that is discussed uh with every application, the applicant's intent is to keep. The existing shade trees in the front yard on the west side of the property, so there is, we're seeing in some of the photographs, there's a really substantial tree right in front. Um the desire is to keep that. Uh it is reasonably close to the proposed footprint of the dwelling. Um at this moment in time, it's the opinion of the professionals that that can remain. Um if, for whatever reason, that tree cannot be saved with construction conflicts. The applicant must, and he will see the tree removal permit from the borough, but it never moved. Again, the goal here, you'll see from the renderings, that tree is to remain.
Well, there we, should the tree not survive the demolition, et cetera, et cetera. Um you will be required to replant in kind?
Correct.
Okay.
And that, that would be the reason why I raised the permit, because that's something we're a little bit, we'll acquire. So how do we achieve the transition from the existing terrace hardscape at the rear to the natural vegetated slope? Um in order to not cause conflict with our neighbors to the west and to the east. We must propose two smaller retaining walls that actually go perpendicular to the river. And that's really to make sure that we're not impacting their grades and any of their improvements. Um those are proposed here. And those are proposed as part of the D E P application. So such upon that. The applicant has submitted to the state of New Jersey for two N D D E P caper permits. And it's unusual, you really have one in a property like this, we have two. The reason is because of the complicated nature of the rear yard. So your typical waterfront project would require a general permit for the house reconstruction. We submitted that. It's been deemed complete, um some minor comments have been received and responded to by, to the D E P. For the rear, due to the complicated nature of what exists and trying to restore a natural slope with. Still working within the rules, the applicant has submitted a caper individual permit for that. So we have actually two permits in. Both are deemed complete, and again, both have minor comments that have come back and forth, and um based on those initial comments. You know, it's our opinion that we feel that we're, we're going towards an approval, we just don't have the permanent approvals in hand at this moment in time, but. That'll be a condition of any more approval. Um more D E P, uh the home existing enterpost is outside of the flood hazard area of the river, just, just for a point of context. Um and based on our office's site inspection, there are no wetlands on the property. The driveway that I mentioned, a back to the front, a couple of things from the C and E memo. Uh there's a very small reference, there's a fence in the front yard that'll be removed, there's stone in the front yard that'll be removed. The driveway is proposed as shown, um it was the, it's the desired provided driveway that can. Reach the now side-facing garage doors, allow for proper turnaround, and allow for vehicles to. Uh exit, and the reason for the width is, and we'll, we'll hear more about that as we go. Is to allow for additional off-street parking and still being able to maneuver around and get out to the street without jockeying cars. What we're proposing is more than adequate off-street parking for the applicant, keeping cars off of Cootie Terrace. Um the land development ordinance requires three spaces for this home, and our size requires two and a half, we exceed both of those. For new utilities to the residents, we're proposing to comply with all recommendations from board engineers later, and those utilities will be underground, including the electric. For stormwater management and drainage, so that all that hardscape in the rear that's being returned to natural vegetation. Um that's leading to the over fifteen hundred square feet of reduction that you see on the zoning information. So based on that reduction of the surface, runoff will be reduced to all drainage areas, including our neighboring problem. We're also providing the end benefit of the driveway for the roof runoff in the front, as is only part of the program. We, there were comments in the C and E letter about drainage and some clarification points, we're happy to work with the board engineer. To meet any of his comments and uh get uh reasonably get to his satisfaction on any of our details, consulting. Including disposition of war. Two, now what I'll do is I'll summarize the variances um line by line, and I'm gonna reference. The existing condition, the proposed, and then what's required. I think that's all, that's important for context to set up the, the other professionals for their testing. So the minimum lot area, which is an existing non-conformity, is twelve thousand four hundred fifteen square feet with no change. The requirement is thirty thousand square feet. The minimum lot width, another existing non-conformity, sixty-five feet, no change, required at a hundred and twenty-five feet. The minimum lot frontage, again, existing non-conformity at sixty-five feet, no change, required a hundred and twenty-five feet. Minimum lot depth is an existing non-conformity, existing at one hundred eighty-three point five-four feet. No change, required to be two hundred feet. Minimum front yard setback, it's an existing non-conformity that we are still seeking variance relief, because it's a new home. Existing today is forty-six point six feet, proposed is forty-six point six-six feet, which is a very slight improvement. The requirement was identified on our plans as sixty-one point seven zero as the average, however. Uh acknowledging the C and E comments regarding that calculation, including the lots that were requested or should be included. That requirement actually reduced to fifty-five point two feet, so we are closer to what's required than what was originally presented in plans.
Sure, can I pause you there?
Sure.
There's two ways to the front yard setback in this case, being that it's a new. Do you wanna talk about that, or do you want me?
Uh, do you reference in the river?
Uh no, sorry, so there's the zones, front yard setback, and then being that it's a new dwelling. It's based on the, the setback of the, the neighboring properties.
So for this case, what we show on this exhibit, what the plans we show moving forward is the average setbacks um of the properties in the block. Um that's what we are proposing to the board here. Uh so that's where we get the fifty-five point two, we'll, we'll provide that calculation. So we, are you, you want me to explain the other option, Ellen?
I can do it, sure, for the board. So in this case, instead of being a new home, we're looking at two hundred feet on each side of the house. On the same side of the street. There's a couple of exceptions in there as well, um that they have to face the same. Towards, face towards the same street. So in this case, the house next door to the left here to the west. Actually faces forward towards Grand Avenue, so that house is excluded. There's also an exception that if you, uh if one of the houses exceeds the rest by at least fifty percent. Yeah, fifty percent, then that one is excluded. So there's one house that, that follows that criteria. So there's two homes um that we're, we're analyzing here, and those two homes. The average is fifty-five point two, so that um is the greater requirement above the fifty for, uh for the sum.
While I, while, while, Mr. Mr. Rizzo, there's no issue with the, the driveway uh calculation. Of the percentage of the front yard, I didn't notice that in, in the, um I'm just looking visually, it looks like a lot.
I haven't gotten quite there.
Well, it's just the percentage of the front yard, right?
Right, yeah, I didn't see it on the, on the, maybe I just missed it.
It's on page five, it's high, but.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Oh, page five, okay, great. Sorry, Mr. Ward.
No, no worries. So the minimum side yard setback, another existing non-conformity, seeking variance relief with the new improvements. On one side is existing nine point seven feet, proposed is ten point two-nine, so another improvement, requirement is twenty feet. Both sides, existing nineteen point four feet, proposed is twenty-one point two-five feet, another improvement, requirement is forty feet. So minimum setback from the river, which we're in section thirty-seven, thirty-one E, that's a variant, so. What we have today, and I'm gonna, this one's gonna take a little bit of explaining because of our unique deed nature here. Today, we have an existing setback of ninety point eight feet, proposed at sixty-four point. And those are measured to the mean high water, um and why, and that's something our office and Mr. Rizzo did discuss. This for the properties of budding. We have a unique circumstance here where, like I said earlier, our property deed ends at the concrete bulkhead, so this area. That, there's no red area break either, so this area that's on the beach is someone in question, uh that we're not taking. We're not just assuming we, we have, something that's being looked at by applicant's counsel, but for the purpose of this application, we're not including it. So due to limited information, we don't, we don't have boundary surveys of our adjacent properties. But what we do have is something that most of these waterfront properties are measured to in terms of their debt, is the mean high water line, so. Our average that we calculated for budding property setbacks from the river, which we're saying is the mean high water line, sixty-eight point eight. And what we're proposing is sixty-four point eight to that mean high water. And that's shown on our plans and on, on the uh, the survey as well. So. Uh it's greater of fifty feet on the average, the average will be greater than fifty feet of sixty-eight point eight. So that is an improvement in our opinion from what exists today. Um.
And what is the setback?
Proposed sixty-four point.
From the mean high water?
From the mean high.
So the way I would view it though is to your actual, your actual property line, which in this case is uh forty-five point zero feet.
Yes, forty-five point zero six is measured, right, the closest point to that concrete. But for the purpose of the record, that's fine, yes.
Question.
Yes.
So the concrete bulkhead is what we're discussing today, but you are looking at. From council, extending out to the repairing area?
It's, I wouldn't say we're looking to gain more property, we're trying to figure out what's going on beyond. The, the title of what it, of, of the property is between the mean high water line and that concrete bulkhead.
Very, whether or not the applicant walks out there, whether they're trespassing.
Right, so as you can see.
But, but is there going to be possible development past the bulkhead?
No, that is, will be heavily restricted by D E P, but there's. That's what I was just gonna get to, Mr. Chesney, so something that actually, just the aerial itself kind of led into the. The, the confusion here with, with what that property is, all of the adjacent properties have these nice docks that go out of the river. This one does not have that dock, and so say if the applicant was seeking, this is why it's actually being looked into, because. You can't just traverse someone else's property with the, with the dock, or at least an extension to a dock, so. Um that's why it's being looked into, not so much from a zoning perspective, but for just who lays claims to that. It's in between what the state says they own and what we own. Right now.
Yeah.
To be determined.
Good, so the concrete bulkhead exists.
It's there, yeah.
Are there any other, is that in pretty good shape?
I believe so, yes, not, not proposed to be repaired, replaced, or any of that.
And are there other bulkheads being proposed?
On our property?
Yes.
No.
Does it tie into the bulkheads on the west and the east?
Yeah, so to the west lot one, they have a similar terrace, terrace in, you can kind of see it actually nicely on the aerial. Ties into that, and on lot three, there's a, there's a, I call it, that instructor.
Because isn't further to the west, aren't they redoing that whole bulkhead at the end of range?
I, I don't, I don't think it directly ties into, where it's the point where it's a continuous bulkhead.
Okay, so.
It ties into something, obviously, but um it's distinguishable where this property's bulkhead starts and stops, starts and stops.
That makes sense, that's just how it's done, everyone has their own individual.
Could be either way, but I mean.
Does, does water ever come above, come over that bulkhead?
So. Okay, you know, I guess answer, answer it as an engineer is uh, when you, you look at like the, the flood elevation. So the flood elevation is higher than that bulk, uh the, the hundred year, the worst case wave energy flood. Uh what that's meant for is, you know, you're less than a hundred year storms to prevent wave energy from. Taken away from the slope. But there's no, no proposal to raise that, make it higher, taller, right now, it's, it's uh, it's there, good condition. Uh another variance, height of structure shall not exceed three feet within the required river setback. So this is an existing non-conformity that we're seeking their variance because of the new retaining walls. So today, there are four walls that exceed three feet in height within the river setback. Today, we're proposing two walls. And the big difference there is the four walls existing are really parallel to the river, so. These walls are, like I said, are perpendicular, they're actually meant to protect the neighbors, more than provide any other head of the earth else. Maximum driveway front yard coverage, as I asked earlier, existing non-conformity that we're seeking a variance with the replacement of the driveway. Today, it is thirty point three eight percent, today, I'm sorry, yes, existing is thirty point three eight percent, proposed thirty point two percent. Which is a slight improvement, requirement is twenty-five percent. Minimum side yard setback, we get a deck, this is a variance. Nothing exists today, proposed two point seven four feet, and that's to the wall. That is supporting the neighbor's property here on the east side, two point seven four feet. Requirement is ten feet. It's worth noting that there is a deck, as you get closer down to the water, that is meets, actually exceeds the ten-foot side yard setback.
Mr. Ward, I had two point five, but I think I was just scaling it off. Um if you actually dimensioned it, can you just put that dimension out to your plan?
Sure. Yeah, we're seeking, we'll seek the two point seven four.
So the new deck does exceed the side yard setback?
That it's really, it's the retaining wall and the stairs down to the deck. That it's really, it's the retaining wall and the stairs down to the deck, this deck down here is at ten feet, this is actually exceeds, yes.
Looks like you jog in there, where does that stair lead to, I don't have the plan open to the correct page, if you just. So the, the bit that's two, two and a half feet.
So, so there.
That ties into the porch?
It, it does, so the, there's a, there's this rear porch area, there's steps that come down, we have to. Okay, so. I'm gonna stay away from architectural testimony, but, um, here's your rear deck area, a couple steps down to this side.
Got it.
Call it long way, and then down, and then you can see it chops back in, and that's what the deck is, to look like, this is just closer, getting pretty closer down to the water.
And the green area there, that this, that right now is existing patio, hardscape, right?
Tears of, uh, you know, cement block walls, you know, and, and pavers and, and stone, there's not a lot of bench in there. And that's what, that's what I was referring to with the, uh, light colored mulch, well, well deceiving could, could represent sand, sand is not, um. The most stable in this, you don't have exposed sand on a slope like this, so it will be a mulch ground tree.
Is that deck concrete? Do you think it's the deck concrete?
Uh, the. No, okay, I'll, that, I believe it's a composite. Okay, rear yard setback for the deck is a variance, so existing nonclimbable. Proposed in two point nine four feet to the concrete bulkhead, that's, that's on the north side of the deck, and we're implementing. Requirement is ten. Maximum building cover is a variance, existing nineteen point two two percent. Proposed is twenty-four point two nine percent, but the requirement is twenty percent. Maximum compatible floor area ratio. The. Proposed is zero point two nine and required is point one five. Maximum impervious coverage, existing fifty-four point nine six percent, proposed forty-two point six eight percent, so that's the elimination of over fifteen hundred square feet. Impervious, required is one of the bigger benefits of this application, requirement thirty percent in this sum. So, Mr. Brodsky, that's the, the conclusion of my correct, we're gonna finish up by just listing the variances and. What we set the table for the other professionals.
Mr. Moore, will, will anybody be able to testify as to what the existing house is, with respect to floor area, floor area ratio, if I just see. Does anybody have?
Yeah, so the architect is here to explain all that, um. What I do have, you know, almost like, let, let the architect go through each part, I don't wanna get pieced in.
Any real subquestions for Mr. Ward?
Sir, can I, I'll set it to you, I think.
Yes, of course.
Um, very thanks for hitting lines, um, sure. So, from the property, do, do many of the properties, um, on this street have sidewalks or curb? Is there sidewalk curb today, and are you looking to propose any of those?
We are not looking to propose sidewalk curb, it doesn't exist today, and along cootie terrace typically does not exist.
Okay, it's that, that the, uh, borough engineer requires payment and lieu, did you agree to provide that?
Yes, um, yes.
Can you touch on stormwater management a little bit more, I know that today there's a series. Or else I think there's a series of inlets, um. Not sure how much that actually reflects, but there's spread throughout the, the, uh, paver area in the rear. Um, there's weeples in the, uh, bulkhead, are you looking to utilize that? And then are you gonna be collecting water behind, uh, retaining walls and the bulkhead? And, and you mentioned the drywall, I need to say, is, touch on where that is, what that's collecting.
Sure, I'll, I'll start, the drywall's gonna be a little simpler, that, what we'll take is the roof runoff. To the front yard to the drywall, which is the typical requirement in the borough, that's, that will be in the front yard, we'll make sure we avoid any conflicts with. Utilities, uh, coming into the home, in terms of, uh, the rear yard drainage on the slope and all that, which is very important. Yes, there are, uh, there is existing drainage infrastructure, it's a little bit of a cobbled mess, but there are discharge points. Through that concrete wall, that concrete bulkhead, um. Rather than reinvent the wheel, we'd like to try to reuse those pipe penetrations, so any collection, basically northward of the home. That we, we will, you know, adjust, and, and we'll throw this to the, the, the warrant engineer as a condition of approval. Uh, we will tie into that, uh, which, again, is not, not gonna reinvent the wheel with the drainage discharge to, uh, maintain that. With the reduction of coverage in the rear, there will be less water coming through those holes, which is a positive, and, you know, for stability and all that.
We, we can work on this at a later date, but, um, your intent will be to collect the water behind the walls and the bulkhead instead of just.
We're talking here.
And, and the walls too.
Yeah, yeah.
So instead of draining over them and creating a waterfall situation, you'll try to drain it with stone or pipe behind it. And then bring it down the back and then out, the problem at the bottom.
Yeah, we don't wanna have any, uh, extra water saturation behind these walls, it won't be good for them, we'll make sure. I think that's what you said, Mr. Rizzo, yep, we will, we'll make sure we determine, uh, some sort of drain, you know. Behind the wall of some sort that'll get it through.
And you're agreed to provide a, a soil conservation district certification, their primary focus would be slopes, they obviously make sure that you're. Not creating any erosion, you're stable.
Correct, yeah, yep, absolutely.
And then, uh, the full pages of technical comments, you'll take any exceptions, then you'll address those at a later date.
No, we reviewed those as an office, we have no issues, uh, with any rejected or new comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ward, one, one other question, I think that Mr. Rizzo was pointing out that somebody's, that was greater than three to one, and. On those areas being described, if you're gonna do theirs, like a geocell material or something that you're installing to keep the soil stable?
Yeah, so we, we, we've got back and forth with Mr. Rizzo, um, nothing, obviously that's been. Firmly presented in terms of material or, or product or board, but it will be some sort of geocell. Which are really anchored into the slope, and the, the material, the surface material is actually in within the cells. It'll maintain that two to one slope, uh, a lot of vegetation actually will be planted in the cells, and then, once everything's matured, that stuff's permanent. So, uh, that would be the intent, we, we will work with the applicant architect, they have a landscape architect. We'll make sure that the borough is well aware, that's, that's, it's a condition, it's a condition, we're gonna do it then. Thanks.
Can you, can you just briefly, may have missed it, cause I. Your preferences in elevations to either side of the property.
Sure.
Obviously, I, obviously from the property drains to the back, but I'm just wondering what the differences are in the elevations to the. At the right side and the left side, and how we're addressing that, cause obviously it tends to go down, I'm sure it doesn't go straight to the back. Does any of that drain to either side of the property on lot three or lot, I guess that's lot one.
Well, start, yeah, start at lot one, and you can kinda see, it's really a function of how deep their house is in the lot. How much further back they are, they have more of a flatter area around their house, and then they have that, those terraces, you can see them here. So, they don't have the, uh, they're not doing what we're doing, I don't wanna say that negatively, but we're seeking a nice, continuing slope down. Little bit of lawn area, we have to keep up their. Slopes or their braid, I'll call it, with something, can't, you know, there's not enough room to make it work with just braid. So that's why we have this, there's, we're trying to put boulders up there to give it a little more of a natural look, but there will have to be a wall. Because at the highest, it'll be about five feet tall, right at that corner, on, on this side, and then, so there is no water, and in fact, we're actually taking. We're gonna take on some of their runoff, which is really, I think, one of the points of, uh, Mr. Rizzo's question about behind wall drainage. On lot three, we have somewhat of a similar circumstance, but we're proposing, but it's, it's a lawn that comes out of the back of their house. And it's actually at a different elevation, different starting, and when we have that, we have two different slopes that are kinda working with each other or against each other. That, this wall here is a little bit lower in terms of retention height, and, uh. Again, it's really just, it's, it's actually not as long as the one on the left, cause we don't have to, doesn't have to be as extensive, we're just proposing what's necessary, so. Same thing, um, council, if water is actually, we're not, none of our water's going out, if anything, it's coming in, and it's gonna get to the river.
Okay, any more questions? Any, probably from the public have questions, Mr. Mr. Ward on them.
Steven, Steven Gold heading in on his son, his brother, how about, uh, Hurricane Sandy? Is that gonna impact that property?
A hur- a hurricane sandy type storm would impact this property since the water, yes. Would it impact the home? No, the home is high and dry above the hundred year plus, cause it's the. Flood zone on the water side is a, is a velocity, uh, flood zone, which means it's prone to wave, like. Houses, and even the cellar of the houses is above. So the only thing that would be impacted is really along the shoreline, um, natural vegetation established, slope like that. It's something that the D E P desires, and that's more of a natural shoreline to prevent against erosion, if it's maintained. Sure, and that's the applicant's intent, they want a, a nice maintained property.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Okay, Lynn Slawn White, you've already been sworn, and you would, through the, through the benefit of the board and the records, provide your, um. That with an experience with the lights and dark, like during.
Of course, I have a bachelor of architecture from the University of Notre Dame, I've been a registered architect since two thousand and one. Registered in the state of Notre Dame since two thousand and sixteen, I'm a partner at Asher Slawn White and Partners Architects based out of, uh, Philadelphia.
Any more questions? Have you been before this board before?
I have not been before your board, I've spoken to the board in Rumsen, and I've dealt with various boards on a regular basis, predominantly Southern Jersey, Atlantic.
Thank you, everybody okay with? Sure. Thank you.
Okay, Deborah, if you would, um, I see you've got, uh, one of the exhibits that you marked earlier, uh, wouldn't that A eleven? Okay, if you're gonna start with that, we've converted that and any of the other exhibits that have been marked. Let's, from an architectural perspective, walk through the property as it exists today, and then let's.
I'm, the existing home that sits here at eleven Cootie Terrace was built in nineteen fifty. And, well, somewhat maintained, it is definitely in age, and the design of the home is. Not necessarily, uh, mentor of the design of the typical fairytale and, and desired home. It does present two garage doors to the street front, and it is one and a half stories. We investigated the concept of renovation as we do with any new project when the clients approach us. And however, this existing home, again, is not meeting current energy standards. It was built in nineteen fifties, it was nineteen fifties construction, it would need, um, a substantial renovation, new windows, new doors, new roofing, new siding. And the existing floor plan tucks the kitchen, which is the heart of the home in today's world. All the way up against the back shared wall with the garage, so there's really very little natural light that comes into that kitchen, there are really, I was. I've been in the home several times, no views to the river, and the second floor is really tucked into the roof structure. There are only two bedrooms and a very small office on that second floor, and private bedroom suite, as well as an. Ambulatory bedroom that has no access to a bathroom, and in order to renovate this home to meet the companions' desire. Uh, development, we would have to remove the roof, and. We are also intending to push the back wall of the house a bit further towards the water, um, to be more in line with the adjacent properties. So we would have to be touching the foundation, in short, everything about this house would need to be touched in order to renovate it. And in the end, we would really have an inferior product, and if we honestly scrape it and try it. The proposal for a new home, so this exhibit eleven, um. Again, courtesy of Google preview, this is the, the same home, and this is our proposed new development. And the goal that the foundation has is to create a modest. Home on a very challenging site, both zoning wise, D E P wise, and going on her testimony, and. Were created, uh, understated elements here, there is development of the property, it's much better than the existing home. However, through, by raising existing home, creating new, you've been able to avoid a lot of the. Challenges that the current home presents, so that may actually.
I may be talking through just kinda a little of the idea of the design, because you mentioned, of course, the existing home is not. Commensurate with fair even, but this design is beautiful, but it is obviously well outside of the character of the, of the town, right? So maybe if you could talk a little bit about that, we're hardly an architectural review board, but I think, I'm sure, I didn't ask someone else, so.
So. To your point, our design is not a typical white shingle cables ended home, and. The intention with the new design compared to the existing was intentional in that we flipped the garage to the other side of the lot. So starting with celebration, the concept of street presence, we did take the existing home, flipped the garage on the other side. And placed the garage door, so you can't see it as much from the street, and again, very intentional move on the client's part and on our part. The street, the house as it meets the street, the massing was intentionally left as a one-story building. We are not providing, um, attic storage above this garage, again, with clients for when all of that concept. With the idea of keeping it simple, keeping it quiet, and the home itself, again, utilizing natural materials. New energy efficient windows, and the massing of the house does not have a pitched roof. And against the backdrop that your zoning code actually doesn't require a minimum, minimum roof pitch, which so many other zoning codes do. And we took the liberty to put a flat roof on this home, it allowed us to keep the massing of the house significantly lower, it is almost nine feet. Under your allowable ridge height, and again, feel like the presence of the home is very in keeping with the developments of the neighborhood. Especially the neighborhood that we, that we need next door, and as we, I've already spoken about, the house to the. Left of this property faces on a ridge, so we can't really see it from the street, it's not really as relevant to the conversation.
Purely from a, an aesthetic perspective, I think it complements the mid-century, mid-century modern exterior very well, yes, that's just my take.
And, and there are a number of houses that might not appear from the street side. On the river side, there are a number of houses, one is right next to the, yeah, I call it, was today, that has the same facade. It just dates the work as opposed to the street.
Subject to an extensive review by the sport, I.
Why is your driveway so wide?
Our driveway is wide, and partly because, well, two reasons, first, right, three. The companions are, uh, current modern family, they've got two grown children who will visit on occasion when they're too legal. And the intention is that we want to be able to, as an everyday home occupant, pull in the driveway, make the left and park inside the garage. They will, the floor plans are showing how difficult, um, arrival would happen, but at the same time, we wanna provide parking in the driveway. So there can be a car parked and another car can get past it. If we don't allow the driveway essentially to be two cars wide, I'm constantly shuffling who's in the driveway, who's in the front, and then resulting in people parking most likely on the street. So, we do acknowledge that it is wider than strictly allowed by your variance code, or your, or your zoning code, but it is, again, very similar to what the existing.
And you don't think you could accomplish the same thing by making the entrance to the driveway a little bit shorter and then. Building it out as you get further back?
That is a valid concern, the, right now, we are building out this section, so that when I pull out of the, out of the driveway, I can back.
Can you need that section, Mr. Rizzo, is, is, I know it's, there's a technical, you know, how much space you need, is that required, that?
It's, um, it's thirty feet between the garage and the, uh, right side here of the driveway. I think thirty feet is typically what you're shooting for, so.
Okay.
I think it's appropriate.
In order to safely back her car out.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
Okay.
Mr. Slawn, did you, um, take a look at the plot plan and then the front yard setback? Um, which is a variance condition, did you look at how you could possibly. Shrink the depth of the garage or shrink the mudroom depth to maybe get that setback a little further?
So the garage itself is honestly a foot larger than a typical parking space. We did wanna give the companions a little bit of wiggle room to provide, uh, the ability to open their car doors within the garage, so unfortunately, the garage shop for itself. And often, and it's small, and we debated this, the length of the mudroom, and perhaps if I bring this exhibit forward. And this was part of your, uh, package, so this would be the A five exhibit, and. Mr. Rizzo is referring to this length right here, the length of the mudroom, so again, our garage sits here, Cootie Terrace is. Mr. Rizzo is referring to this length right here, the length of the mudroom. So again, our garage sits here, Cooley Terrace is uh out at this end. If we reduce the length of the mudroom, the corner of the garage gets ever closer to that front entry door. And we were really concerned about how people are coming to this home, how welcome it feels. We don't want you to feel like you're entering into a. Tiny little um passageway. Instead, we're really aiming to keep the entrance and the front elevation of the home lighter and brighter. Again, one of the challenges of the existing home is there is no sun that comes in from the street side. So we really with intention placed a large window here in an interior considered the music room. And again, we didn't want, this is a pinch point between that front corner of the garage and the front corner of the building. If we shorten the mudroom, we find the garage closer to the front door. It was considered.
Got it. Um, I see that your mechanicals are on the left side here, the west side. They're on a raised platform. Outside of the house. How are those gonna be accessed?
So. And the intention is to screen those mechanicals. So these are the condensing units that are required for um air conditioning. So again, as Mr. is pointing out, they are housed on a platform outside kind of in the back of the garage. With this bluebird system, those doors, the the bluebird system would be doors.
Okay, and then I guess do you need a ladder or something to get up there?
No, the platform would be eighteen twenty four inches off the ground. So there would be very easy for uh for access. All of the other mechanicals will be fenced in the cell.
Okay, then there's sufficient room on that platform um to get in there and walk around too, right? Not just, just enough of the guys.
Exactly. There's ample room for the condensing units themselves as well as the.
Being that you're starting from scratch, does this house have been designed with less square footage?
Valid question. And. None of the rooms in this home are oversized. It's a four bedroom, three bathroom proposed plan. And. We are, we did, someone asked earlier this evening about the existing home and the the coverages. We've had the opportunity to survey the existing house and. The existing house F A R is two thousand nine hundred and fifty three square feet. Our proposed F A R is two thousand five hundred and ninety square feet. So we are proposing to increase the livable area of the home roughly six hundred and thirty square feet. And. In today's world, our rooms need to be a comfortable size. This lot, this riverfront, we're developing a new project here. The rooms in it need to be commensurate with the expectation of a. Of a new homeowner, the buyer, all this, all this property.
Uh it's a significant property, even though the lot is small. I think. Being undersized would not be a good thing. And looking at the size of a lot, maybe, you know, we're looking maybe at similar, closer than a fifteen, which is a thirty five hundred.
But if you're somewhere between. If you're somewhere between R ten and or ten A and and R fifteen. You're still, you're still up to get thirty two hundred, thirty two hundred square feet. I mean, you're, you're. You, you're still over, you're still over the uh thirty two hundred square feet if you were in an R ten, ten A or R fifteen.
Agreed. Unfortunately, there isn't a great guidance as far as the metric on exactly the number we have to reach because our lot is so undersized for our district. And could I take four hundred square feet out of this house? It would be a challenge, but you know, could we find it? The bedrooms are thirteen by thirteen. They are not generously sized. And the primary bedroom is fourteen by fourteen. There is no. Extra space here. And our cellar, we. Recognize fair breathing school and not explicitly including full basements. Our cellar is not visible from the street. We have a seven point five ceiling height down there. It's really. Not a generous living space. It really won't be um as usable as some.
But you're not being penalized for, for your square footage. So everything, everything else is uh. Uh it's the rest of the house. The cellar is is a nomination. So you've got, you've got thirty five hundred. Thirty five uh ninety square feet, you know, between the first and the second floors. And so you're not, you're not being penalized at all for a seller or for an A. Could you have designed it with with less square footage?
It would not have. Then appropriate to the scale of the economics of the lot to know. This place is smaller. It is a four bedroom house. So could we have made it smaller? Yes, we could.
I don't think it presents that big from the street though personally. I think if you're looking at where this house has space, I think it's all behind. Well, behind the front, which brings, which faces the river and so that that's just my, my. Two cents. I think it shows very small from the street personally.
As it, as it tangled, again, as it was considered the one story building. The bulk of that square footage is really at the back of the property, invariably imperceptible from the street. I don't know that personally walking by is going to be able to perceive. Home because we did not face a large. Flat facade right.
But some could play into the side yard setback.
We've improved the side yard setbacks compared to what is there.
Well, yeah, but you're starting from scratch.
Yeah. If we met the letter of your zoning code, though, the house on this lot can maybe twenty five B Y. Which really the size of the lot, the width of the lot really presents a hardship based on the zoning vote. It really was. The lot was not intended to be in the zone in which it was placed.
There's sixty five foot wide lot, right?
It's supposed to be a hundred and twenty.
One twenty five.
So you added six hundred fifty feet?
Six hundred and thirty seven.
Six hundred and thirty seven feet. So that's the mass of the house. You know, I'm looking at this. What is the reduction in the overall coverage? Square footage.
The inverters coverage comes all from what we're taking out of the back there.
Which exceeds the six hundred.
Oh, far.
Yeah.
Yeah, then that gain not just.
All of this square footage has essentially been able to be second floor of the home, not the garage. So again, if we could, as it sits. The second floor is tucked within a roof structure. This second floor existing is tiny. The ceilings are really low and they. They've lost a lot of square footage because it was.
So, so what you're saying is the six thirty seven isn't six thirty seven on the footprint?
No.
It's quite, it's substantially less.
The footprint is virtually there.
Quite a bit of inverters, right?
The patio behind the house. Exceeds the side yard setback.
The deck, right. So that was.
Could that have been informed?
Well, actually, I brought up earlier. It seems like it's the stairway or the pathway leading to the patio. That's the problem and not the patio itself.
So the patio itself, the deck itself is actually aligned with the house.
Right.
But in order to egress from the patio to get down the eight and beat to the river, we had to put a staircase on.
Correct. Could there have been?
So that it can form.
I know aesthetically, I like to kind of offset, but given that you're only three feet from the side yard. Could you have moved that staircase? Closer to the center of the, you know, a little further away from that. Yeah, granted, there's a retaining wall here.
Exactly. I was gonna say, so aesthetically, I could have put it anywhere logistically as far as the age you would have, I would have to prefer to refer.
Isn't it but the retaining wall? It's there. It, it, it does. So if you were to move it, say. Three feet to the right, then you'd have a three feet, three foot strip to clean the staircase in the return. Is that correct? Okay.
So how high is the retaining wall in relation to the staircase?
It would vary as far as where it sits. And the, do you wanna say? As the stair descends, the wall does need to be a little bit taller again to retain the earth coming from the neighbors.
Yeah, you see now looking at that, it's because of the retaining wall, it's almost. I mean, I thought originally, when you look at the overhead, you say, why is that there and not there? Looking at that, the retaining wall is there anyway, so.
We're utilizing the retaining wall to.
Is that the existing retaining wall with this, with basically pathways there that's up against?
Yes, that leads to the wall.
It's a retaining wall intended.
There, oh, yeah, there is an outstanding on that wall. You know, we could take out a little. Corner of that. Um, I think it's.
I don't think it's once for any more, actually. I think that. Green or privacy law.
Well, I was going to say that it does. But it does, it does visually, probably have proximity to the neighbor. It does visually uh. Cover up the.
Okay, back to is. That replacing the pathway that is there now or is that on the other side?
It's on the other side, but we're not keeping the existing pathway and we're not. So right now, if you can imagine the back of the home as a walkout, similar sort of replacing ours. And then it has a series of stairs here. That will be.
Again, to speak to the. But the Dr. LaForte, remember that we're dealing with a low structure as well. We're only twenty six and a half feet. There's no peak to the roof. There's no. Excessive dormers, like we said, a lot of other houses, which add to the, add to the bulk of the street section. Thank you. I'm sorry.
There's no intent to uh go out the exterior door in the cellar and then traverse down to the water and stack that.
In order to get out the water deck and, you know, you could traverse through one of these mulch pads, but it is not intended as a primary.
Is there access to the water at all? Can you, like, is there down to the retaining wall or you can just go to the retaining wall exit? Can you get to the beach?
You can get to the beach.
Community any wall. The way it is high.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't interrupt.
Any, any more questions?
Any, any of the public have questions of the architect? Yes, sir, Mr. Nolte.
The uh, I don't think it's a category one waterway. How does that affect your, your design?
Mr. Ward can speak to that.
So I mentioned earlier about the N J D heat permits. So when you say category one, that's, that's a N J D designation. There's strict compliance with the cap permits that we have to demonstrate. Just kind of generally summarize what we're doing is is advantageous for a category of water by replacing the hard state with. More vegetation, especially as close proximity to the water. But there's compliance that the D E P heavily considers. That's already been submitted, we feel like.
So you might know the answer.
Oh, we do know the answer. I mean, it's, it's a long winded answer. There's. The three hundred for inner one fifty, outer one fifty, we demonstrate compliance with both, improving both with this application, which D E P will. For that specific part of the compliance will look favorably upon based on our here.
Glad you're, glad you answered.
Yeah.
I can walk me through floor plans if you'd like me to. I can initiate here.
Do you hear that uh previous testimony that we know intend to um use the roof as a.
There is no. There will be a full down ladder to access strictly for maintenance.
What's the construction on the flat roof? I've had some horrible experiences with flat roofs in my building life. I hope it's improved over what I.
It is. So our current intention is to use open web trusses for all floor and roof structure. And we would use super insulation in order to create a pitch. Cover with C P O and then um. There will be multiple stuffer locations coming through to a downspout which would be tied into its form water management. And the garage building, I'm considering actually just having a single slope to one side and running a uh stuffer dome of the. Backside of the garage to allow all the water to run off into a better system.
Thank you.
If you don't know already, you should consider very regular maintenance because they will get clogged and.
And seagulls and.
I've got many. Just not, gotta be like a two twelve, right? I, we'll give it to two twelve, two thirteen, whatever it takes.
We have a lot more within the um. Water for ceiling height within the building for a significant like a taller roof, it will be disguised from the street vice.
Just on the cellar floor plan?
Yes. Yes.
I couldn't tell from the renovation. The gym.
Yes.
Those windows to the, to the, two windows?
They are two windows. We have certain things that need to be into windows in the window well, it. Is not intended to be a bedroom. It does not meet the classification of a bedroom and then I have to a closet. And.
Well, closet can be an arm wall.
The windows are not currently intended to be egress windows. If we need to make them egress windows to meet code, but that is definitely not. Yeah, definitely. It does not currently have egress windows. As designed. And the family room on the ground floor does have a door that does obviously egress out for their. But that is not intended to be used.
So you can, you can walk out from the basement to the. Backyard is that. So you're considering that. Does this still qualify as a basement as itself?
So it's based on the average existing grade? Which have discussions with the engineer on the previous day. So average existing grade is is categorized by a minimum of four corners around the building. Um, in this case, when they submitted, they put visible on it. They've provided five spots around the building. Now there's one corner that is much lower than the rest and. The higher their, their average grade is, the better the project makes it easier for them. So I asked that they reduce their, their points to four. So that they don't like mute out or dilute the the lowest number. So it, it raises it a little bit. They've done that. Um, I think they brought it on the exhibit. They still need to formally submit it, but with that calculation, they're showing that the average existing grade. To the first floor is less than thirty inches. And that's really all they need to do to show that it's a cellar. It doesn't count as a half story or.
Thank you. It is interesting thought.
But actually, few places in town it really matters though, because here it's on the block. It's an issue, but most really not. Interesting, okay.
Great. Um, anybody have any more questions? Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Jenny, you've been sworn. So uh if you would give your qualifications to the record as a professional planner here in.
Certainly, I am a licensed professional planner as well as a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. Um, I've appeared before this board on numerous occasions. I have a doctor's and master's degree in civil engineering from the New Jersey Institute of Technology. Currently serving as the planner for the borough Carter Rec, uh Freehold Borough. Uh as well as redevelopment planner to South Amboy and planner to Livingston Township and Essex County. Uh been appointed by Governor Murphy to the State Board of Professional Planners and an advisor to the New Jersey Planning Officials. And I, uh, I said, I've been before this board many times as well as accepted throughout uh New Jersey as a professional.
Thank you, Mr. January. Yes, no, no problem accepting Mr. January's credentials. We've seen him many times. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Mr. January, if you were just um. Sort of describe to the board uh what you were uh uh asked to uh review, what you did review. Uh and what the conclusions are from the planning perspective.
Certainly, um, I was asked to essentially review the application, review the correspondence with respect to the application, review ordinances, your master plan. Uh as well as uh any other issues that may impact the uh variance relief that's affected this evening. I was asked to provide a testimony this evening relative to the necessary statutory criteria to uh ensure variance relief. Uh for the nature of the variances that are sought this evening. Uh for the record, this property is within the R thirty district in the community and I have here uh what was marked as A twelve. Which is an exhibit which highlights the existing property in green. Uh as well as shows the zone lines. And as you can see, the R thirty zone uh is along the riverfront. We are within the R thirty zone, even though we are significantly undersized, but that is essentially the character uh here of. Essentially what's west, uh sorry, east of brain. We see the, the lots tend to be with the exception of one uh somewhat narrow and long. And we are directly across from the R fifteen district. Uh it is a single family home uh district. We are a single family home. This house has been there since nineteen fifty. Um and as you've heard from the architect, it was uh explored in terms of whether this house could be renovated or somehow. Uh salvage with respect to. Um, and as you've heard from the architect, it was uh explored in terms of whether this house could be renovated or somehow uh salvaged with respect to uh. The necessary requirements to make this a livable four bedroom home, and conclusion was that it would be significantly more practical and, and a better alternative. To come fresh with the building, uh with respect to that, that, that provided some opportunities to uh correct. Or to come into closer conformance with your district even though the lot's significantly undersized and I'll go through that uh shortly. Uh, so uh I won't go through the extensive list of uh. Issues that were raised or, or, or the list of variances that Mr. Uh. Patrick, excuse me, uh went, but I will go through the justifications uh shortly. Um, just for the record, we had talked about application of different, uh how different districts would, would align with this. Um, and there's been some discussion about R ten and R fifteen, uh just, just for the record, um, this lot is. Twelve thousand four hundred and fifteen feet, does fall within that R ten, R fifteen, but if we look at the R ten standards. Uh, the F A R for an R ten lot will be point two eight, we're proposing point two nine. Uh, the maximum square footage permitted within an R ten would be thirty two twenty, we're at thirty five ninety and you heard justifications for that. Uh, the lot coverage in the R ten would be forty five percent, we're at forty two point six eight. The building coverage would be thirty five percent, we're at twenty four point two nine, building height would be thirty two feet, we were at twenty six point seven five. Uh, the lot width would be seventy five, we're at sixty five. And the uh side yards would be ten feet on each side and we have at least ten feet on each side, combined would be twenty four, we're at twenty one point two five. Um, so we are, as noted within R ten, which would be a similar size lot to what we have, very similar, very close to what the bulk criteria would be for the R ten. Um, in looking at this application, uh we actually have to justify this in terms of. Uh, balancing this with the criteria within your master plan and the objectives of your master plan as well as public purposes. As this board knows, that variance can't be granted for the sole purpose of benefiting the property owner, there has to be some public benefit in those listed for us within the municipal land use law. With respect to your master plan, uh, your master plan recognizes that there are a variety of, of homes that, that are within the community, some that have been. Uh, essentially outdated or outgrown in terms of being able to accommodate. And it does talk about the need to control infill development and to, to preserve primarily the, the residential character of the neighborhood and it reinforces. Um, maintaining its town character and the character of a neighborhood, I believe I heard a board member um discuss how this. Very well complements the home immediately next door, which is that, that single story, reads as a single story from the street of mid-century modern. It is an eclectic variety of architecture on the streets, I do think it's complementary to what's there. So I do think we're respecting that character of the neighborhood. With respect to the purposes of the municipal land use law, I believe there were three that we are promoting in this instance. Uh, they are listed by letter and I'll uh read them as they appear in the M L U L. E is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that'll contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and regions and the preservation of the environment. Uh, again, this house is a single family home, it'll continue to be a single family home, it'll be a four bedroom, three and a half bath home. Uh, it's maintaining uh massing that's essentially respective of the streetscape and, and geared towards the rear of the house. Where it won't interfere with the views of either side of the neighborhood, it's, it's very respectful to that. So it is uh properly concentrated, uh it is properly uh associated with respect to density. And in terms of preservation of the environment, we are curing a lot of issues towards the rear of the lot in terms of impervious coverage, bringing it closer to what the current CAFRA standards are. So I think we're very much on point with that public purpose. G is to provide sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, industrial uses and open space. Both public and private according to their expect, respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. Um, and we've heard discussion about, you know. Special characteristics of a waterfront lot. And those, those do have special characteristics, special needs and, and do require some special treatment, I think we've achieved all that. Uh, again, our massing has been very carefully selected so that it reads small, reads toward the back. We are uh correcting some issues, but respected the slope to the rear, we're still maintaining. Uh, the ability to, to manage waterfront views and waterfront access, but very respectful in terms of how that slope can be maintained. And getting rid of all that hardscape that's essentially unnecessary and. Not favorably found by the D E P anymore. And finally, I is to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. And I think the architect kind of nailed that in terms of discussing that even though this house has a flat roof, which is not characteristics of Fair, Fairhaven. It did help in terms of protecting the massing of the house, keeping the scale of the house down. Uh, keeping the shape of the house somewhat unique to, and with respect to the shape of the lot. Maintaining the minimum uh side yard setbacks that would be anticipated within this zone in terms of ten feet. Uh, on either side, even though we don't, uh, I'm sorry, to the R ten zones. Uh, and, and it's actually improving on the side direct setbacks that are currently there. So it will be a desirable visual environment, it won't impede any issues with respect to the neighbors in terms of. Uh, creating any issues with respect to light air and o- open space, they're going to get essentially setbacks that are very similar to what's there today. The massing is situated such that even though it goes back, it will not create any uh visual view line impediments. Uh, across the rear of the property, it will not uh jut out beyond those properties to create any view issues. So I think it's, it's been very respectful in terms of that and it has been a very desirable uh design with respect to the limitations of the lot. Which brings us to the variance relief, uh, the first variance I'd like to discuss is the D variance for the floor area ratio. And when we're looking at a D variance for floor area ratio, the Coventry Square standard is uh what we apply not for the D G, meaning the use is permitted. And we have to concentrate on what the deviation is. Uh, in this issue, the deviation is that we're exceeding the minimum floor area ratio. Uh, part of that is because we have an undersized lot for the district and we're applying the standard for an R thirty or a lot that would essentially be twice as large as this. Um, we, we looked at, uh, as I mentioned, the R ten zone, which is very similar and. You know, that permits a point two eight, we're at point two nine, so we're very much in keeping with respect to the scale of the lot and what would be anticipated in terms of a home. And the R thirty would permit a house that's essentially five thousand square feet or larger, we're undersized to that, so we'll do attempt to scale the house. To the size of the lot using your bulk standards for other districts as a guideline. Uh, when we look at what the impacts of the, of the changes are. Uh, or what the increase that they are, is, we have to understand this is again a modest four bedroom home. We're adding about six hundred and thirty square feet to the existing uh square footage, it's all second story space. We are essentially using a, a footprint that's very similar to what's already there. Uh, the height will be under the thirty five feet that would be permitted, and I believe that the R ten, a thirty two foot height would be permitted. Uh, which we are still significantly under, so in terms of light air and open space expectations, we're not impeding anything. Uh, shadowing to the neighbors in an unreasonable fashion. Um, so when we look at the impact of this and whether it's a substantial detriment to the neighborhood or to the neighbors immediately, I don't believe so. I think uh it's very respectful of the lot shape, very respectful of the orientations of the neighbors. Um, and essentially not something that's significantly uh. Imposing upon the neighbors. We have to reconcile that again with the negative criteria, do we need to intend your ordinance and your master plan, again, this is an infilled site. Uh, we are respectful in terms of how we mass the house and how we try to keep that streetscape small and keep that massing going uh essentially out to the back. Um, we, we uh understand that you have uh considerations in terms of infill lot, I think we were respectful of all that. And we think we are very close to what the bulk standard would be for a similarly oriented lot in the R ten. So in terms of reconciling that with your master plan and your ordinance, I think we're on point. With respect to the C variances, uh, the dimensional variances such as the lot size, the lot frontage, the lot width, the lot depth, those are things we can't change, that, that's a fixed. Uh, issue and those are by all means hardships that we can't change. So in working with those hardships, we created a footprint of a house. Uh, that honored setbacks, again, we're, we're setting back the garage at the existing house setback, but we're separating the bulk of the house. Further back, be more respectful of the streetscape and how that orients itself to the street. Uh. Essentially, we have to show that we're, we're presenting a better zoning alternative by the way we've oriented the house, by the way we've situated the house, by the way we've honored the setbacks or considered the setbacks. And I believe in all those instances we have, the uh, the variances we're seeking. Are very respectful in terms of setbacks, again, the, we're looking at the R ten, we would need a minimum ten foot setback, we meet that ten, although we don't meet the combined twenty four, but we're just shy of that. Uh, with, with the front yard setback, we're very close to the uh average setback of the homes. Uh, immediately to our east, having said that, that's for the garage, then there's this space where the house gets set back further, separated by that breezeway. So it reads essentially much smaller from the street than it does currently. Uh, and will be set back and we, and we're not going to be looking at the garage doors.
I do appreciate that design, I, I. Was, had a problem with the, the width of the driveway, but if we flip, so you're facing the garage door and narrowing the driveway, I think that's a worse look than. Than what we're seeing now.
I agree, quite frankly, the house that fronts on Grange, when, when you come down the street, all you see is the two garage doors to that garage and, and that becomes the anomaly on the street.
I think the trade off of the garage width to the not seeing the, the garage doors is, is, in my opinion, is good, but.
I, I would agree, I would agree. So, so go through all those variances that Pat went through, uh, I would offer that when we look at the balance of, of that in terms of. Is it specific to a lot? It is, does it? Advance the purposes of the municipal land use law, I believe it advances the three purposes that I read into the record. Is, does it substantially impair the neighborhood or the neighbors? It doesn't, it, they're, they're all reasonable, they're all scaled properly. They honor light air and open space, the mass is under the height limitation, i- it's not. Any significantly different in terms of setbacks from side to side or from the front than today, it's actually a slight improvement. And again, the big benefit of this is that we are curing a big issue with respect to overall lot coverage. Uh, curing all that hardscape in the back, creating something that's a little bit more palatable in terms of the D E P regulations and, and how that reads, it'll be softer. Uh, it still provides access to the waterfront, still provides a very usable recreational area, it takes advantage of its waterfront location, but in a much more respectful manner. So when we look at that on balance and we understand how this fits in with your master plan and your zone plan, I believe all of both variants really we've tested can be granted without substantial detriment to the neighborhood and we meet the tests.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Jenny, questions for Mr. Jenny? Nobody? Any members of the public have questions of Mr. Jenny? If you would give reply.
Thank you very much, Jenny.
Okay, um. Mr. Brodsky, as we discussed earlier, um, there's, by the way, does anybody have any questions, many of the professionals? As we discussed earlier, oh yeah, certainly, Mr. Lawrence.
If I heard the engineer correct, they have not yet decided. On the type of material they're going to use to retain this stuff, they're talking about, I think they mentioned Cell Tech. In ones, but I understand, if I understood the engineer's testimony correctly, that hasn't really been a finalized detail. Fair characterization?
That's fair.
Alright. Do you have, do you have any concerns about not seeing that at this point in time or making a condition of approval?
So I can certainly review it, um, I know typically the standard is a three and one slope as a max, however. Um, they did agree that they need their, their free old S C D certification and they're the agency that really dials in on. Exactly that, you know, the slope stability. So I think so long as they can um get that certification in that agency, I think that, that really does satisfy the slope. And then. In addition to that, I would also review it and make sure that that's exactly.
Any problems with that?
I think. So, given that we have six voting members and we have a D variance, um. Up to you, how you want to proceed.
Jerry, could I, could I ask you just for a quick five minute break?
Yes, of course.
So just wait and discuss with the time.
Of course. We're gonna take a five minute comfort break while Mr. Brodsky uh. We're back on, guys.
Water plant delay.
Okay, um, right now, I'm going to open to public topic, if there's any members of public who have any, any comments who'd like to make. Uh, regarding the application at all, please. Let the record reflect. Excuse me? Oh, roll call, please. Here.
The Angela?
Yeah.
Mr. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Perkins?
Here.
Dr. Law?
Here. Here. Okay. So any members of the public who would like to make comments? Let the record reflect none, I'm gonna open the board to discussion at this time. Thoughts? Questions, concerns? Mr. Rod.
Well, sure, I'll start, very unique property, obviously, um. You know, it's basically a. An R ten uh that's sitting in our areas, there's obvious challenges there. Um, that there's testimony to have, it would have to be like twenty five feet wide if you have to comply, I mean, it's. I think certainly there needs to be some recognition of, of the hardship of, of the property. Um, I am a little torn about some of the things with trying to compare it to the R ten because we don't quite. Go all the way to try to inform all that, I mean, I would like to probably see the floor area ratio come in at a point two eight. So you could kinda hang your hat on that a little more rather than. Coming in a point two nines, um, I, I kinda feel like. You're sort of cherry picking certain things of each zone and kind of fit. Uh, the application, but that being said, I, I think we need to be cognizant of um. The effort to get rid of a lot of, a lot covered, especially in the back, and I think there certainly has environmental benefits to that, without question. Uh, very interesting application for sure. Um, and I do appreciate some of the efforts that were made to, to mitigate with uh respect to the bulk and the massing. Uh, but I am a little torn about some of the um. You know, the size of uh the square footage, I think there probably could have been an effort to, to, you know, narrow it down a little bit with uh. The overage on, on the square footage.
Thanks.
Right. Uh, sort of similar to, to uh Marty's comments, listen, I think it's great, we talk about respecting the river, right, trying to not abuse it, and I think this. By a long shot goes. Uh, quite a bit of the way towards improving that. Obviously, it's a skinny lot, it's tough. Um, I think the massing of it is nice. You know, listen, I, I really do love the design, I, I like modern architecture, I personally do not feel like it belongs here, but that's just my opinion, that's not a planning thing. It, it truly is beautiful, you've done a great job, um, for me, it's just hard to see that on that block. But outside of that, I think. You know, you guys have done a great job to reduce the impervious, massing's nice, I like the switch in the garage, I, I, I do think there's a lot of positives to it, so.
So I'll take the opposite, but I understand what Frank is saying, um, this is not a historic district.
No.
Um. There's a mid-century modern house next to it, I think this house is a definite improvement, front and back, because this is the unique property that has frontage. To the road and the river, and I think uh. Both sides are gonna be a vast improvement, not only environmentally, but just aesthetically. Uh, with that said, this is, you know, I think we say it, I, I say at least every meeting that we have here, another unique lot in. Fairhaven, whereas Mr. Ryan said, if they conformed, it would be a twenty five foot. Wide house, which is basically a brownstone and hoboken which we don't want, um, I think that would be more of an eyesore. Within the neighborhood as opposed to what they are proposing. Um. You know, the last meeting when we were here, we were talking about, you know, every. Application is unique and you look at them as to what they bring. What they infer of uh in regards to improvements, like the chips that they put on the table, I think just based on. The improvements they're making. To the environmental aspect of what's going on there, removing that hardscape. Uh, the river is uh, you know, it's a jewel of our town.
Having a dry well.
Having the dry well, I mean, there, there are certain things that I would. Want to make sure like past that retaining wall, there, there is a uh. Uh, in that repairing area, you basically have a wetland there now with the grass and everything, I would want that to remain, um, I would want to um. You know, develop this stop at that retaining wall, because the river is, I mean, it's an important part of our community and, but I just, I was on the river when I got the phone call, hey. We have a meeting right now.
We could, we could tell by the hat and glasses.
Thank God it wasn't out of my boat because I would not be here, um, but I'm glad I'm here because I'm very happy to see this and, you know. Like I said, it's a challenge. But the positive, I think outweigh the negatives and when you look at the improvements and the hardships that they have, um, you know, I, I think there's a good solution to. That piece of property.
Do you feel like this goes far enough to try to comply with the R ten? And it's the testimony sort of what. Almost still, and Dr. Law for you had a couple of questions and lines too. So. I do.
I'm not sure we're trying to comply with R ten, it's just comparing the, the. Size of the lot, because it's an oversized ten or an oversized fifteen.
Well, true, and I, I shouldn't say it complies, that's not the right word, but if you're comparing, do you think that it goes? As far as it. I mean, I think the testimony though, right, the thirteen by thirteen room, I mean, that is not a big room.
They're not bigger, yeah.
They're not big rooms.
I mean, they didn't, we, you know, we see things that are, you know. I mean, they didn't, we, you know, we see things that are, you know, on a regular basis where it's like, oh, we have five bathrooms. And you know, this is, seems like it's a very reasonable design for what is there.
Just a tough lot.
Yeah, it's a tough lot, I mean, that's a. We see it every month, these we these funky Fairhaven lots that, you know, they've been existing forever and and we need to bring them.
Remember the economics of the situation too, we're talking about a waterfront lot. You know, if you put a small house on a waterfront lot, you need to have square footage somewhere to make it economically viable for the for the zone, for the area.
I think that's an excellent point that that can't be forgotten, and I do appreciate the um. The scaling of the house, um, the mass does not. The light air and open space is really handled nicely. Um, and I, and I do go back to what you were talking about, Paul, when uh, Doug was telling us about the chips that. There are absolutely trade offs and and. You know, they played some chips with the removing of all of the impervious from the back and. Vast improvement of that um, part of the property. And um, I think that that that's that's worth a great deal.
That's the same footprint overall, right?
Here, what, what is the uh, how many positive votes do we need? We need five. And we have six voting, I mean, six voting members, so basically we're we're having some discussion and then I'm gonna ask Mr. Brodsky. If you'd like to receive a vote, and if not, we're going to carry and um. Uh, I guess it would be Mr. Ridgeway with your testimony and then we can um. Make a decision on the next meeting when Mr. Ridgeway will be voted. But that's where we are right now. So we're not saying we're gonna vote tonight, but uh, we wanted to give Mr. Brodsky the benefit of how the board saw things and. How we're gonna move forward. Your comments are always appreciated as. If you have anything further ahead of me.
I I don't have anything further to add, I mean, I I hate flat roofs and hate.
Fair enough, that's.
But you know what, they they. And I, and I don't totally agree that 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 this building fits in with the uh. You know, with the the nature of the property. I'm a little troubled by the size of the uh, of the building, I understand that the mass is in the back. It's a beautiful design and it's just, I I'm I'm torn.
Appreciate your candidness. I think that's everyone. Uh, Mr. Brodsky, would you like a minute, make sure you uh. Your call.
Someone. And that's why I made sure I kept that early on, to say, hey. Here's how I really feel, but not my.
One of the uh.
Hi, Mr. Chair, I think we're gonna um, uh, if we could, just uh, carry the vote, which we wanted to give other members the opportunity.
Okay, um, very good. Say again, yeah, we'll we'll motion to uh, carry to um, now, we have. Two slash three for August, for September. I don't think it will be a uh, a long issue, so when we meet in September, so we'll try to just get you on to it. September fifth, uh, without issue, without requirement, or you notice.
You already have two.
Plus good one, I think this will probably not be a long discussion, Mr. Ridgeway, while we're listening to the testimony, there will be. No further testimony, as I understood from from the professionals.
Board has any questions?
I I think, I think the, I anticipated by the votes and guidance. That to the extent that they're we're carrying, I would encourage the board. To see if there was any additional input from Mr. Brodsky. I don't anticipate that there's going to be any more professional testimony. But I would encourage you that when we have folks that have signed off the certification, that they have listened and reviewed the materials. That you again engage in your discussions, so you get to benefit of their thoughts as well. And then I think you, I I. Unless there's more presentation, Mr. Brodsky anticipates providing, I think it's gonna be. I don't want to jinx it, I don't think it will be as long as we all, as as this hearing this evening.
I I I agree, I mean, you've heard all of our tests, you've heard all of our testimony, you know.
The applicant has the advantage of the full, should have the advantage of the full board.
Agreed, sure.
Just because we have that super majority before.
No, fully understood.
And it's in my calendar.
Set in the work. Thank you all, uh.
Did we vote?
No, we did not, I made a motion. Why would you have carried second? Or do you make a motion? I made a motion second. Mr. Leaders, we join the place.
We'll do it, um, we, actually, you talked about it before.
We don't either, that's up to you. That's up to you, if you think you, you can see their testimony, you had public on that, we had a board on that. Unless you think there's something else you want to do. The board does not require or tell you.
It's a ten twenty five, um, I I don't know whether or not there is um. A lot of purpose in trying to talk to the other issue, because I think at the end of it, well. Um, so Jordan, there there's three issues, I think, that you've raised for the board, um. And those issues have come up through some review of applications subsequent to the amendments. Can you just kind of highlight at a at a high level what those issues are? And I I think that um, you figure out what to do as a next step in light of your observations.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Jen. Uh, first one is cellar versus basement, which we saw tonight, I think we saw it at a recent hearing. Uh, the new definition is very clear for cellar, it's if it's less than thirty inches. Uh, if the finished floor is less than thirty, we'll get to kind of piece together some definitions, but essentially finished floor elevation. Is the distance between the uh, first floor to the average existing grade, which requires. A surveyor, it's about all these four corners. And then a basement is if you're greater than thirty inches. And there's another section in the ordinance that also says if you're thirty inches, it's it's a barren condition, because we don't want that really for a new house. That was intended more so, I believe, for uh, brand new dwellings, not necessarily existing. But the issue I keep running into is when someone submits an application for an addition. We want to establish what the existing floor area is. The floor area definition excludes sellers, doesn't exclude basements. So we need to establish what that bottom floor is. Um, when the application hits my desk the first time, they almost never have the average existing grade determined. So I have to ask them to do that, or we get until, you know, the week before and they're still scrambling to try to figure out what that is, which kind of happens. So I think either we establish that the zoning office needs to put in their letter. That these, the surveyors averages existing grades required, or we maybe need to revisit. How we're applying these or maybe rewrite it to some degree.
I I think it was an oversight when we wrote the new, because we wanted it limited to new construction, right? Not thinking that the definition of. Basement and cellar needed to be changed, needed to be amended to kind of point that out. Because we certainly don't, I mean, we're trying to make it a little bit easier for people and not more onerous, so do we need them to require to measure the. For existing construction, no, I don't think so.
They're only done that comes into play that though, does it come into play with these older ones like Harrison where they're peeking up above that thirty inches? And now all of a sudden, it's it's included in it, because we saw it now.
Right, but but the the intent was not to penalize a house that's been there that they want to put it back.
Is there a way to, do we just modify it and say that piece of it applies to, you know, new construction only, just to?
If you read the definition of F F B, it says applies to new construction.
Well, I think what he's saying is you gotta dig so far and he's. No one's getting it right.
Piece together a few definitions, but the ultimate one is cellar versus basement, yeah, I think it's pretty clear.
I think the problem is, you're gonna have a house that was relatively new, was built with that fifty percent cellar basement sort of threshold. That comply, and now all of a sudden, somebody comes back, you're gonna be picking up all that square footage. That wasn't intended to be square.
The problem with the two is it adds a third floor, which is a D then, and it triggers B, and that's totally not what was the intended.
You didn't want to drive up all of the application's cost because of something that was already existed, it's unaffected. Except by the way you know calculates.
From a board standpoint, now you're you're approving a lot of thirty eight hundred square.
And we, like you, like we had to do, and like you mentioned earlier, that that you have assessments and things that are gonna be, you know. Can we put a date on it? Is that sufficient enough or?
But I I need to establish existing floor area, but we know what we're adding to it. So how do we determine what that bottom floor is?
Okay, so first of all, the intent clearly was to guide. Future applicants and future developments to keep the first floor level down. Because the development unrestrained kept pushing the first floor elevation up. We cannot limit the first floor elevation to new construction of additions. Because there is definitely not a sound planning goal to have multi-level first floors. So that wouldn't exist. The issue that I'm having with what's being caught up. Is that we potentially could be sending people here that wouldn't otherwise have to come here. Those that are coming here, it is certainly relevant how high out of the ground they are. And so if somebody were coming in with a forty nine percent above. Grade first floor elevation and we're seeking a variance for additional square footage, it should be considered. But I think that right now the zoning office is taking a pass on all of it as pre-existing. The only reason you're seeing the ones you're seeing is because they're triggering other variants, they're already letting them through. And I think, Jordan, that the answer to the question is that we should have a discussion with zoning. About how they're doing it, you should come back to us and tell us, but I support clarifying the ordinance. Then it is clearly only for new construction. That said, to the extent that they're coming to us, it should be a condition of anything coming before the zoning board that we know. What that first floor elevation is, because we will be able to assess whether or not that's important. Um, that doesn't mean that they should necessarily have that counted as square footage and treat it differently than everybody else, but the data is important. Uh, because it it's important in understanding the massing of the structure of the lot. So unless anyone's.
Do you have to ask what it's categorized at? Can you ask the measurement?
Uh, we we can ask for the measurement, yes. We can take the measurement and consider the measurement without flipping it from basement to cellar here, I'm not suggesting.
And we did that the same. Right, by saying. We recognize that this would normally trigger, but it is not being done because.
So so if that, if that application tonight was pinged to thirty feet. And we had an actual number to learn that they had that basement down low or up high. It may have had some relevance in how you saw thirty one hundred versus twenty two. And I'm suggesting that that is something that we would still want to know. But that that is kind of an appendage to cleaning it up with regard to new construction. The only people that can control what first floor elevation is relative to.
So does that start with you or does that start with somebody else to?
I would like you to speak to the zoning officer about how they're currently treating it and confirm my theory. That they're passing the rigorless pre-existing, and once we've done that.
I already know the answers.
The answer to that is yes, then then I will take it where it needs to go to get it cleaned up and I will ask you for some help. In what you think we need to tweak in the ordinance to get that. Yeah, look, I mean, I I prefer not to have to do anything with the ordinance and just have it thought. But the truth is that um, that may not be fair. Uh, for those that really do study it and understand it, um, they may get down rabbit hole that I don't want them to get. Everyone all right with that? So say you all, what's the second?
Second one is addicts, the definition, it's a paragraph, one of the sentences is. An addict shall not include a kitchen, bedroom, or bathroom unless authorized by a capable person. So I understand from the zoning office and then the building department in Brunson that um, also does Fairhaven. Is that there are no applicable codes that prohibit a bedroom, bathroom, or kitchen in an attic.
Would that be a third floor?
That that's how I. That that's how I would do it, or if you have a ranch. And you have a second floor above it, which you want to call attic. You don't have to consider the square footage of it, so you're kind of cheating in that sense.
Yes, I mean, an attic is.
In my opinion, if you have one of those three, you're probably not an attic anymore, you're probably a floor.
Well, so remember what we're dealing with here. The attic that we're talking about that's relevant is the free attic. The free attic was offered because we were constraining the measurement of floor area. And we were trying to liberalize the ability to live within the structure. Um, by being practical, because it's there anyway, why not let them use it? The constraints on that is that only thirty three percent of that attic can be seven point two feet or above, right? Seven, whatever it is, so they're not large spaces per se. Uh, by definition, in order to be a free attic. The other thing is that we are not similarly restraining any sellers. So those of you that either live in or know people that live in a modern thirty two hundred in an R ten. Know that that cellar is usually spectacular space with tall ceilings and wine rooms and nanny quarters. Sometimes kitchenettes and bathrooms, and everybody's pretty much okay with that because it's buried and no one has to look at it. And so I'm a little bit torn on this, because to me, whatever they use that attic for. As long as they're complying with that thirty three percent, I think that's generally within the spirit of what we're doing. Um, I don't think that the structure is gonna look any larger. And if the legislative intent is to let them use as much of that interior space as possible. And someone has a design and put a master suite up on the third floor instead. Add it instead of a a bonus room or whatever else they wanted to do with it, I just don't know that it materially matters to me. But it is true that when we did it, we didn't think we could do it. We thought they were restricted from from Uniform Instruction Code to putting those improvements up there.
Put the bathroom up there is one, then put the kitchen up there is a second.
Did you know where that language came from or was it just? Unless percolated by code.
I I have no idea.
Was that just like a throw in, just?
Well, no, I'm just wondering if there, because if there, if there were, you know, I mean, that could also. You need to address that language, because if for some reason Boca does something day after tomorrow. Now there's a provision or there's a code as opposed to one or is that, was that there?
I don't remember it. I I think, I think the real question is whether or not, for a starting point. Whether or not anybody is offended by the idea that you can do a first floor, second floor. And, you know, call it, call it fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred, and then upstairs is five hundred, seven foot clear. So if somebody decides to make that into a master suite and figures it out, puts a dorm room, I don't know what it is, do you care?
No, we looked at a house in Brunson when I moved down here ten years ago, that probably did the same thing, it was an attic and it was a bed, it was a beautiful master suite. So you could see out into the ocean.
Here's what, here's what happens.
There was no kitchen up there.
The more, the more flexibility you give them, the more they will push the envelope on what a free attic actually is. And so maybe before we make it carp launch to do what you want, we need to be really sure. That particularly those dormitor. That particularly those dormant areas and the total measurements are being calculated correctly. And that we're not gonna wind up with bigger spaces than we expected.
Well, and I'm not, I'm not a fan of any form of minimal regulation as possible, but I think that needs to be spelled out. As to what you can and can't do up there. You know, in free space, you're talking about a master bedroom. What if somebody then decides, well, I wanna turn it into a mother-in-law suite and we're gonna put a kitchen out there?
You know, like a little wet bar and the whole line.
Well, remember you're constrained to that area under seven feet and it's not a lot of area.
It isn't, but what's basically what we know that people will try to do whatever they can.
Play that out, play that out. Why do you care? If it's a mother, if it's a mother-in-law suite.
That they could be rented out further down the road.
No, they didn't say that. A a a second problem here. Inside of a structure like this would have to have some separate entrance. No one's gonna let somebody, some renter walk through their living.
Don't say never. Some weird stuff.
Kitchen doesn't make any sense.
Beautiful. It's it had a big, the attic turned the attic into a wonderful master bedroom. It was lovely. That little deck out in front of it that looked out.
So so what if somebody wanted to have a kitchenette in their closet? What if they wanted to have a sink? It just happened to be at my buddy's house and he did this. He didn't have a sink, but he had a microwave and a coffee maker in his closet. And I thought it was really silly, but so what?
Was it an office?
No, and it's his walk-in closet.
Yeah, like a master bedroom and you had a little wine fridge in there, like that's how, but that's how it starts.
I like the way you think. I don't want to, I don't want you to be an applicant, but I like the way you think.
So right now, so right now in the finished sellers, people do bars, they do. So what if their nanny's living down there and that's used or it's for the kids? I don't, I do care. Yeah, I I I don't wanna, I I'm not saying.
I just think it needs to be, and like I said, I am not, I am the least regulations possible. But I think that it does need to be somewhat corralled. Because as we know, people will do whatever they can.
And by the way, they might do anyway. I think we can get ahead.
Yeah, as long as we're comfortable with how we measure, because we've always had this, does this part count? Does that part count? Which leads to part three, ne- never under, never underestimate the pole.
So remember what a kitchen is, right? So you've got water already because you've got a bathroom. A fridge plugs into an outlet. Um, a cooking element can be electric that can plug in. Um, you're kind of, you're, you can do that anywhere. I I we we can tease this out. I I think that the question back to you is. Is there clarity to the measurements because it is critical? That we are maintaining a reasonable slope to the attic space because we're getting particular roofs. I don't know what's happening with dormers and what we're permitting. But I think that they wind up taking square footage above seven feet, so it's some somewhat corralled as it is. And it seems to me that it's relatively safe. And if it is, I don't think it matters. Uh, but if we wanted to say no kitchen's fine, but then you get into what would the next kitchen? Doesn't sound like anybody has any strong feelings about the installation of a bathroom. That's consistent with code, that's consistent with the definition. I guess we can just let everybody marinate around the idea. Of should we implement some additional restriction as to going beyond that and we could talk about it.
What you're saying is consistent with the zoning office and the building department. However, I've been personally asking the applicants over the past six months or so. Do you agree not to put a bedroom, bathroom, or kitchen in your attic and everybody say, no, we're not going? And well. So, you know, until we got to one application, I did wanna do it. That's that's how it's.
No one was gonna build over the garage either.
You know, I always thought that um. I always thought that. The third floor requires separate exit. Because I did a renovation project in Matteawan and the zoning officer told us we couldn't finish it for habitable space. Because it was too far from the exit and it was fire hazard. And I'm not entirely sure that Rumsen is right, but I do respect those guys a lot and I'm gonna give them the benefit of the doubt. Um, and at the end of the day, you know, like I said, I I I don't care what they do up there. As long as it looks like it's just an attic and it doesn't look like a third floor. I I see you, Ruth. I will open it to the public. So as it sits, the ordinance is interpreted in a way that allows it. I think what we're telling you is that nobody here feels as though you need to tell them they can't do it. And then we could revisit the issue over time if the kitchen issue feels like it needs to be addressed.
Got it, thanks. And then the third one is just really quick. Uh, it's regarding upzoning. Um, so the way I understand it is for the most part, they probably wouldn't be coming to this board if they comply with everything in the upzoning criteria. Because you have to do everything. One question that came up is regarding number of stories. So Faraven doesn't require or doesn't permit anything greater than two and a half stories. So if someone were to be converting a half-story attic to a full-story attic. Does that take them out of their the previous upzoning that they got by with? Which would then open up possibly several other variances. Another criteria going back down to years.
Let's go back to the beginning. Upzoning permits them to do a job without coming for a variance, a hundred percent. If they're coming to the board, they're not upzoned. They can't be. So if there's any variance at all, it doesn't work. That means the, okay, so I think that that's clear. Is the ordinance clear on that? And it was just a matter of how we read it or does the ordinance?
I don't think the ordinance is clear on it, but I am clear on how we're utilizing.
So you're saying that you can upzone, we comply with everything, I don't have to come put it forward, but I'm creating a third story essentially. Well, that doesn't, nobody uses a lot of third story.
So there's no upzoning if you have a third story, which is pretty much a full attic.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me that that would just be a variance condition, right? There may well be a good reason to do it. But there may well not be. I think the idea of the upzoning, you know, look at the applications tonight, like if there's a way. That they can say using these rules, we fully comply, can we avoid having to go before the board and all this time and money that it takes? That was the purpose. And so once you're coming here, you can't hide behind the fact that you comply with most, but not all. And I don't see how the story is anything. Uh, can you, can you?
So so if someone were to go to the zoning office with a fully compliant upzoned plan. Proceed and then in the future come back to convert a half-story attic into a full-story attic. They no longer follow under the upzoning criteria and now it triggers a whole bunch of stuff that.
Oh, I understand what you're saying here.
I still don't.
Isn't that separate though? I mean.
Cause then you're gonna go back to the zone that you were originally in.
So the regular attic is thirty three percent. So to make it a full attic, you're saying you want more than thirty three percent up. Well, of course that would come back because the idea.
But not just for that one variance, but now you're.
And you're opening up all the other variances that would have triggered.
Now they're already gonna go, right? So the question is whether they can modify the attic. They could do the slippery slope, but they may not get the attic. But but the initial upzoning was all compliant, so then they're left with something that worked. Right?
You're right, because then they'll be pre-existing and they wouldn't trigger the variance.
Again, the free attic reversing the thought, if they did that upfront, they would be here, right? The the free attic is something that we're trying to let people. Use more space inside their attic. We have to be really careful that it isn't abused. Um, and everything's been abused in the past, so the question is not if it's one, but you gotta watch for it. And all those normers and the thirty three percent is where those measurements are. And you know, the other thing that just came up is that there was an applicant that was trying to describe. Like a roof section between a recessed second floor. And so when Jordan presented it to me, he's, well, how do you calculate this space? I said, well, it's either first floor or second floor. And if it's on the second floor, then the question is whether or not it's under thirty inches because we gave them a certain amount of room. And so that's super important, but unless we look at it the same way every time, unless we get that measurement from them. Then we're right right back to where we started. Um, and if it's more than thirty inches, that amount of bulk warrants calculation as. Where.
Yep, I'm clear there. Thank you.
Ms. Blazer. Could I ask you to step forward so that Al can pick you up? I can't, can you project as well as you can, please?
Yes.
Ruth Blazer, River Road.
Still there. Years ago, the criteria for for an attic was whether you went full downstairs or whether you ran a fixed stair. Is that still a part?
No.
It it's, it is part of the criteria.
Well, we changed it. What we did was. So so Ruth, it's kind of a long story that stretched out over about a decade, but this the short version is. That when we decided to constrain first floor elevation, make sure people were not sticking their basements out. We restricted a lot of people's ability to build a large cellar. As a result, we said, well, is there a place that we can allow people to create some extra space? Because like it or not, people need more space, our lots aren't getting bigger, so is there a practical solution? And so on balance, what we determined was a true attic and that's determined by the roof pitch. And that's determined by the interior measurement of where from the. Attic floor and the bottom of the roof rafters hit seven feet and above, okay? So as long as it's only one-third of that footprint, true attic, they can use it. They can then put a fixed staircase to it and the pull-down doesn't count. They can independently do a pull-down and they don't need to meet that criteria as long as they're not living in.
But uh. Follow my mind. To me, if I own a piece of property and I own something that who didn't set that, no matter what it looks like. I should be able to build.
Well, so you can build it. If you build it greater than thirty three percent above seven feet, then we consider it to be a regular living level and we're gonna count the square footage. And then. Yeah.
Why do you have a minimum square footage for a problem? Some of these double wives are absolutely important.
A a minimum square footage for the house? We don't.
I I don't think Faraven does. I know some towns do, that that's the whole tiny house thing that's not allowed because they're, I don't think Faraven does.
I'm not aware of that.
But you don't need it once you have lot-shaped diameter and then you have side, you could be able to upgrade by your side. So not to be funny with the flat, not to be funny with the flat roof, but play out the attic situation with the flat roof. Now you get like a little block on top of a block. Imagine if they did it here and they had a little section because there's no dormant area to to. Delineate out where it is, you would get a flat house with a little section on the top that was thirty three percent if they had a fixed stair. You would get like a thing that would look like Lego box built up because there was no pitch of the roof like.
Some people like Lego box.
But I'm just saying, could you imagine what that would look like with a flat roof? No, it would not be over the height of it. Probably not. Look at these guys, they were nine feet under.
I I I don't actually know that that would be the disaster that you're presenting. And then you'd get people walk with with doors walking out onto their flat roof because you'd be tall enough to walk in.
I can't believe they don't have. Why does he care if they wanted to root there? I don't understand why it's so important.
I don't know. I I don't, I do not like the aesthetic of it here. I lo- I love it. I think it's beautiful. I do not like it here. It looks like it belongs in the Hamptons. This is.
So so the architect, the architect. So the architect pointed out that many towns have that restriction. Don't. I think the reason is, the way I always understood it is because you don't want to look commercial. And you don't want them sliding a third living level so that what you really have is a three-story apartment. I think that's the reason that in the beach towns they don't want it because you're gonna squeeze a whole extra floor in there.
We were talking about it before. I said, it is true in Baltimore that you have a roof pitch. Your life and they grant every variance as long as there's no electricity, as long as there's, as long as there's no way.
All right, remind me what I promised you I will do. Anything else?
Wrap it up. No, it's just a seller versus basement.
All right, we'll take care of that. Sure, uh, can you double the length of the the meeting on September fifth and just make it thirteen hours?
I'm, you took care of all the.
But what are we, but what are we doing? Because we've got now two plus two.
So here's the thing, my my thought through September, this. Application was realistically, it should take fifteen minutes max.
To the extent that I understand what happened, I'm guessing that you're just getting a new vote with seven people. And there's no additional.
We will have a discussion. There's no testimony. Mr. Brodsky can do a quick summary if he wants to at the beginning. We're going to have a discussion for uh, Ridgeway's benefit when he's here, just so we hear some.
Oh, no, Shabani's recused.
We can recap our thoughts on it, which could take no more than just a minute and then while.
Yeah, so I I think the weirdness about it is that they didn't have anything to take away.
Well, they took our discussion.
Take away a potentially change because it wasn't clear with regard to the trepidation of the two of you. That changing it by any particular amount would have made a difference. And so I think what you're gonna get is the same plans, simply the addition of Ridgway and then a vote. But everything changes if they feel like they need to present something or if Ridgway's asked some questions. I mean, I can't imagine coming here without my questions again being ready, but let's just assume that's quick. Then we're gonna go what? To the people that were on for tonight?
Then Goodman, well, Goodman's the one that we couldn't get to with the.
They, it's like they've carried it many times at this point.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know. And I said.
Well, there was one or two carries because Aiken was late and all the others.
How many times has Goodwin carried on their own before tonight?
I don't think they have. I think.
Well, the first night was the the one with the sprouts.
They they carried it today because they would have been a hundred, a hundred percent vote in order to get their. I I I'm gonna say this again and maybe Mr. Ridgway will get this far on the table. It was really upsetting to lose a member today. Al got sick and Al had a recusal on Copenhagen no matter what, but please be mindful that if we had an extra person here. That project, the last project would be done. Presumably, or or they'd just be rejected and then they'd have to go back and start again, but they'd be thirty days in advance of where they're gonna be. Um, these other people, I think that Mark would have gotten here and we could have heard them, like it's majorly disruptive. If you have, I I understand that you didn't see your.
I spaced out. Spaced out. I literally thought it was there.
Thank you very much for being receptive and getting over here. By the way, did you notice everybody in the room clap for you? Well, anyway, ju- just just be mindful and because stuff happens, Al got sick and so we have to be ready for that. And so we gotta have nine so that if we get 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 down to seven, at least we've got seven. Um, that's it. So I think we need to hear those two first and then the other two are just gonna have to be behind the mission to wait.
Yeah, I mean, Goodwin, we 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 need to get that through. We heard most of it. We heard one, one full session of it anyway.
I don't even know what they're presenting.
You know, we we've heard.
Well, it's maybe Brodsky comes back and.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to sit here, I'm happy to sit here with. I'm just real glad I'm happy to sit here through Goodwin. But don't forget Marty is out on Goodwin, so am I, so if it goes really wrong, those people are gonna get pushed. I'm happy to come here and vote for for um, uh, Conneigan, whatever his name is. And then it's gonna be him, so I'll go on the back, but if it's a wrong thing, which is gonna be.
I don't, I don't expect it to be a third chapter.
Right. So so do you guys have a preference in terms of Goodwin or Copenhagen first?
I wanna get through Copenhagen first and then we can.
Sure, go Copenhagen first, Goodwin second. And just let the applicants that are first and second on the agenda presently know that we have two to carry. And they're gonna be behind the two to carry and just hear what it is. Don't give them my number.
All right.
Oh, oh, and also, and also that we have two recusals already with the Copenhagen and we need seven. And we have two recusals already with regard to Goodwin, so we need seven, so we need perfect attendance.
And it's in my calendar with its two-day alert and a two-hour alert.